Okay, good afternoon. We will call the regular meeting for Wednesday, April 26, 2023, to order at 4:02 PM. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankes?
Present.
Director Daniels?
Present.
Director Jorgensen?
Present.
Director Loma?
Here.
Director Mal Pakem?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Present.
Director Ott?
Here.
So we have six board members in person present in the boardroom today, and Director Bankes is joining us remotely. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Director Loma, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
I move the Board of Education adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankes?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The agenda has been adopted as presented. We do have executive session today for roughly 90 minutes. Director Daniels, Daniels, can you please make the motion to enter into executive session?
I move that the Board of Education convene into executive session to discuss negotiations per CRS 24-6-402, 4E, Particular Matter Interest-Based Bargaining, IBB, and Meet and Conver.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Melissa, roll call, please.
Director Bankes?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session now and reconvene for the rest of our regular meeting at approximately 5:30 PM in the boardroom. Hi. Good evening. Sorry to keep you waiting, our executive session just went a little bit longer. So we are reconvening in public session, and there is no need to modify the agenda after executive session. For those of you who did not see the start of the meeting, the agenda was adopted as presented. So it's good to see all of you here again in person. Last night, I was talking to Ms. Olson and also Superintendent Gall, and we were unsure if we were going to have an in-person meeting. The weatherman was wrong. Yeah, cleared up, so we can meet in person. And it's always good to recognize our schools and students in person. So as always, I request, I request everyone in this room to please be respectful, civil, and courteous in all your interactions. Please follow the expected norm and professional decorum, and looking forward to a productive Okay, we are going to have, I think these are students from Grant. Henley, Teigen, Christian, DeAndre, Pearl, could you, the Grant Elementary students, come up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, guys, that was awesome. Moving on to awards and recognitions, Superintendent Gall, we have a lot of students. I just talked to a few of them out there. Let's introduce them and recognize them.
Holmes and Jenkins FBLA winners advanced to Nationals. Teams from Jenkins and Holmes Middle Schools, consisting of 53 students and five advisors, traveled together to Brighton, Colorado on March 8th to compete in the Colorado Future Business Leaders of America Middle Level State Conference. Of that prestigious group, 29 students placed either first or second in the state, earning spots in the Nationals. This elite group of students will travel to Atlanta this summer to compete against the best of the best from all states in 17 categories, ranging from business ethics to website design. Future Business Leaders of America, or FBLA, is the largest business career and technical student organization in the world. The FBLA Middle School Division was started in 1994 for students in grades 5 through 9. FBLA inspires and prepares students to become community-minded business leaders in a global society through relevant career preparation and leadership experiences. Each year, FBLA helps over 230,000 student members prepare for business careers.
I'm Carrie Dirty and I go to Holmes Middle School.
I'm Dubai Hacker and I go to Holmes Middle School.
I'm Jonathan Mo and I go to Jenkins Middle School.
I'm Ashen Maxi and I go to Jenkins Middle School.
I'm Chris About and I go to Jenkins Middle School.
I'm Adrian Walker and I go to Jenkins Middle School.
I'm Erin Manchester and I go to Jenkins Middle School.
I'm Logan Sinigal and I go to Jenkins Middle School.
I'm Owen McGee and I go to Jenkins Middle School.
I'm Gary Randwess and I go to Jenkins Middle School.
Kristen Klagerman, Jenkins Middle School.
I'm Heidi Jenkins.
Tony Chakowski, proud principal of Jenkins Middle School.
Big round of applause for all of you. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations and best wishes for you. I think some of you are headed to Atlanta from what I hear, so, yeah, thank you. So moving on to the school spotlight, Grant Elementary School is the school, and I think this whole section is, they came strong representing.
Do we have to stop at six?
Yeah. But just for a minute, there is nobody signed up.
There's nobody signed up. Okay, great. Come on forward, Ryan. As the FBLA folks leave, I just, for those paying attention and watching, that we're talking, that's CTE happening in middle schools. So I just want folks, you know, we have had a lot of focus on how we're trying to backbuild in our programs at our high schools to ensure that our students are finding their excellence through experience. And we have so many advanced programs that are already reaching our middle school level that those students are regionally awarded and on their way to Nationals, and so just hats off to that. Ryan, do you talk about Grant in our school spotlight?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having us. No, thank you all so much for having us. It couldn't be a better time to come to your school spotlight, as tomorrow is Ulysses S. Grant's birthday. He'll be 201 as of tomorrow. So, you know, we wanted to stand out and say, what makes Grant great? And I've got a massive following of teachers, staff, families, students here. If you are Grant staff, would you please stand really quickly? I just want to say, thank you. So when we look at what makes Grant great, here's just the quick highlights. We are a performance school, as designated by CDE for the last eight years, in our achievement and growth, and I do believe that's to the systems we have in place. We are also meeting or exceeding our STAR data for middle of year and end of year, and that's to the hard work of our students here and also our staff. And then we also have a highly involved PTA and SAC. And I say that we are small but mighty PTA, and our PTA president is also here as well, Mrs. Jacobo. For SAC, we did things differently this year. My SAC chair is here as well, Mrs. Sanderson.
Could she stand up?
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, there you go. There you go. This year, we did something a little bit different. We asked for teachers to reach out to their parents. And instead of just having two or three, which is usually Ms. Jacobo and Ms. Sanderson come meet with me before a PTA meeting, this year, we've had anywhere from eight to 14 parents come in, and it has been wonderful. They come in, they share their ideas, we implement those ideas, and that's also replicated in our 5E data in terms of getting our parent feedback and how we implement that into our schools. So we're doing well in those areas. And I truly feel that everything that we just went over, as important as it is, it's just a byproduct of the work that we do at our school. Every school's got their thing. We are relationships. That's what we're about. We are two years in a row national showcase school for capturing kids' hearts, and nominated a third year, and hoping to find out very soon. We believe in the power of relationships with our students, our staff, and our families. It's something that is an expectation. It's what we do, it's what we breathe at the school, and it's very important to us. When we talk about relationships, I always feel like there's stories that make a school. And one of the stories is Mr. Jacobo. Mr. Jacobo, I am going to make you stand, I'm not going to make you talk, though. Mr. Jacobo came to Grant as a parent, and I will hire parents if, you know, if they're willing to come on. But with Mr. Jacobo, she started as a parent, she started coming to PTA meetings, she started to become our PTA president, now she's working for El Paso County PTA. I told her, really legitimately, and meant it, is you'd make a great teacher. And so what did she do? She went and got her sub-licence. And what does she sub? She subs not just in D11, but she subs a lot exclusively at our school. And I said, Laura, I really want you to kind of maybe go get your teaching licence. And she is actually contemplating on maybe doing that, and I think there's a grant out there where she's going to become a teacher. And hopefully, a Grant, a Grant staff member. And that's what I talk about deep roots. My staff assistant is, she went to school at Grant as a child. Ms. Lewis, I'm going to call on you, if you wouldn't mind standing up. And I think some of you, I know President Mal Pakem, you know the story. Chelsea Lewis is a first-grade teacher, teaching first grade in the very room where she was a first-grade student. And she was able to teach with her partner, Kathy Nash, who was her teacher in first grade for a few years before Ms. Nash retired. The roots run deep at Grant, and that's our story. We're about relationships. And I truly believe, thank you, I truly believe it's those relationships that get us those results. So, next up, again, we do great things. Our five essentials came back for the first time. We've always been, since this survey has come out for parents, students, and teachers, we've always been organized in the five essentials. This is the newest and latest and greatest, and we actually went up to well-organized on our five essentials. Three greens, two neutrals, and I'm not worried about the neutrals because those were actually a 59 on each category, 60 is strong and green, so we missed those two yellows by one point. And again, that's, that's a testament to the strong work that we do and the staff that's behind me and all the hard work that they put in. Also, we were very intentional this year with our focus plan time, is what we call it, our focus plan time this year. We rearranged our school schedule, and what we did is we actually added an additional plan time for teachers every single Monday. And with that, we, we spend time, every single Monday, we have, we have central admin come in, we have people from CNI come in, we do different PD for our teachers. And then we have such great teachers in the building, it's hard for them to go in and see instruction happening and taking place just with the normal schedule. So with that focus plan time, not only are we looking at data and what we're going to do, looking at that first best instruction, which is focused one on our one plan, but we have teachers going into other classrooms and having conversations with those teachers, you know, looking for time on task, looking for opportunities to respond, and really trying to get in and be a collaborative kind of live-action classroom with teachers going in and getting to see their colleagues doing the great things in the classroom. We work on six phases, our vertical planning, that's exclusive of our PLC that we also do every Thursday embedded. So we do a lot of collaborative work, which I also believe has led to our great results. Focus plan time, there's a couple pictures here, you can see the walkthroughs with teachers coming in. We've had Phil, we've had Christie, we've had Paul Bungie, we've had a number of people come in and actually do walkthroughs with us to every single classroom, collect notes for every single teacher, and then give those notes back to the teacher as coaching, as coaching pieces. And then you can see our SAC and CSSM. Something else that we did with that focus plan time, in order to create that time, we have a brand-new Lion Lab, which is our steam lab. And we are not a steam school, but we do steam really, really well. And what we do with that is we have a full-time steam teacher, Ms. Andre, who's here, coming up, Ms. Andre, because we're going to use you pretty soon. And with that, we, we don't only do projects for a week at a time with every class, it's collaborative, it's problem-solving. The kids, when I talk to the students, they love it. I never hear anything bad about steam lab from the students. They're coding, they're driving robots, they're doing all kinds of great things. And in the picture up there, when we plan with our community, we have a parent that owns a couple hot air balloons, and she asked, hey, can I come in and do a lesson for your steam lab on the science of hot air balloons? Absolutely. So we had two hot air balloons, full-size, on our back, I call it the back nine, out in our backyard, basically. They got to learn about hot air balloons, the heat, you know, the cold, going up, going down, the airflow, and then they got that great picture of inside the balloon. So with that, I know that we might have a little bit of project for you guys, and so Ms. Andre is going to help direct this with our students, and I'm going to turn it over, so we're going to have some presenters here. I think, Ms. Henley, are you first?
For the speaking part?
Yeah.
No, DeAndre.
Okay, DeAndre.
I'm going to just stop you for one minute. Okay. So at 6 o'clock, we have a scheduled public hearing for Colorado International Language Academy CEELA application. Do we have anybody that's signed up for public comments for that? Okay. So we don't have anybody signed up, and Director Nelson has an event, a school event, that she needs to attend for her child, so she's excusing herself to attend a concert that her child is participating at Martinez Elementary, so. Okay, back to you.
Thank you.
As one of their science, one of their life science standards, second grade learns about pollination by looking at the special relationship between animals and plants.
Pollination is transferred of pollen from one flower to another. Once pollen has been transferred, a plant can grow seeds.
Second grade learned about different types of pollinators and looked at their unique body parts to see what makes them good at transferring pollen.
Here you go. Thank you.
They learned about bees, butterflies, hummingbirds, and bats.
After learning about pollination, they had an engineering challenge. Today, you have the same challenge. Design and build a pollinator that can transfer pollen from one flower to another.
So these are some of the materials that the students would have used to make, or did use, to make the pollinators. In fact, one of the pictures up here is of two students who had made the pollinator. And then to test, to see how efficient it is as a pollinator, we used coffee grinds to represent the pollen of one flower, and then flower to represent the pollen of another flower. And your goal is to be dipping the pollinator into each, and if it's an efficient pollinator, you will see part of the flower in the coffee grinds, and some of the coffee grinds in the flower. So we're going to come around and bring you each a coffee, some coffee grinds, and some flower to represent the flower's pollen. Lastly, also, you'll notice that we only had enough, or we prepped enough kits for us to work in teams. One of the big things that, that we skill, that we stress in the Lion Lab is collaboration, and so everything that the students do is either in a partner or in a group. So we are hoping that you can collaborate with your colleagues around you, yes, and make a pollinator. So, thank you. Do you guys want to go see how they do it? You can go look to see what their edges are. Mr. Gall, do you need one?
I think Jason is figuring it out. Henley, you know, sir. Hi, Henley. Do you want to come around here? No? Do you guys want the camera? The camera? Come around and tell me.
So you're trying to, this, to go in there to get it to the other one. So you probably have them be so close together that it probably wouldn't. So most likely, add stuff to the head, that's a little bit different, then more pollen might stick to the house. You could use some of that.
So does that look okay? Do you want to come up here, in the middle? Are we doing okay? What is your name again?
Tea Dan.
Tea Dan. Do you like her, going to Grant? Who's she, what's your teacher's name?
Miss Moore.
Is she here?
Yeah.
Is she the one sitting right up there? No, not that, she's, I was just asking if you were her teacher. No. But you're Ms. Lewis, too, right? She said her teacher's name is Ms. Lewis, too.
No, Ms. Moore.
Oh, look at that. I can see some already in there. You can see, like in the summer, you can see it happen in the autumn. Okay, you may want to go to the other side. It's become like Party City, y'all. So thank you. That was great. Do you still have additional things?
We're almost done, yep. We're almost there. So, in addition to what makes Grant great, we're a Title I school, and that's something that's super important to me, and we have our Title Family Night. Our Title Family Night, we run in conjunction, the way we do it is with our parent-teacher conferences. We usually have about 300 of our families participate. They go to the teacher conferences, and then we have a gym filled with different activities that our title team puts together for the families on how to support those students at home. With that, we also buy a $5 gift card for every single student that participates. So after they have their parent-teacher conference, after they go through the Title Family Event, they can then go to the book fair for a book. So we're also trying to get the books in the hands of our students. And it's a great fun night that attracts a lot of our families. The biggest night that sets us apart from, I think, anybody else, our biggest night of the year, bigger than back-to-school night, is our Night of a Thousand Stars, and you guys are all going to be getting an invite to join us. It's going to be the second-to-last Thursday, I'll send an email. It's going to be May 11th from 5 to 7. This is our biggest night. Our, as I said, we have generations at Grant, and our students just, just don't bring mom and dad, they bring grandma, grandpa, the cousins. Our PTA, who is small but mighty, they also provide food for the entire group. We usually have 700 to 800 people RSVP, and it's just a great time for our students to showcase their work. And parents come, there's no place to park, and they have a great time with the scavenger hunt, trying to just look through at the building. We get kindergarten to go to fifth grade, fifth grade to go back to kindergarten, we have prizes, but we get families involved and families into our building, which is really kind of the whole idea of it. It's a fantastic night. And one of the great things about Night of a Thousand Stars is that we always showcase a local author. We've been doing this since 2000, since the year 2000, so we've been doing this 23 years. It's a longstanding tradition at Grant, and we always showcase those local authors. This year, we're working with a local bookstore up in the Briargate area, Young Bookworms, they're going to be coming down to us. Last year, we had the fortunate, the fortune of having Ms. Lewis and Kathy Nash, who are published authors. And so I'm going to call Ms. Lewis up here. We've got a book for everybody that they actually wrote, published, she signed it for you. I appreciate this book more than you know because they put me in the, they put me in here, and if you look, I actually have hair, which I haven't seen in a long time, and so it's looking back, but we've got books for all of you. And then the last thing that we have before we go, as they're passing out those books to all of you, is another longstanding tradition, is our Student Council. Our Student Council creates buttons, and they do this every single year. And so I'm wearing one here, and they've been doing this, I think I have a button dating back to 1987. And so they do this every year, and the students create them, they vote on them, and our Student Council came up with this one. In fact, Ms. Pearl is the artist. In fact, Miss Pearl is the artist who created this year's button. And so, we are going to, I'm going to ask Pearl, would you mind passing those out to Mr. Gall all the way down? Okay, we have one. We have one. So, that's it. I want to say thank you to everybody for having us, and thank you. Yeah, thank you. And, Mr. Gall, did you get a book for Treasure Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, thank you.
And we'll ask some questions to you if you want to let the kids enjoy it.
Yeah, I would love to have, absolutely. Okay.
And then, I bring the kids up to you.
Perfect, okay, perfect.
So, thank you. Appreciate the presentation, appreciate the students being here and actually becoming teachers and guiding us through that project. That was exciting. And you also have your own celebrity, a published author in your midst, Miss Lewis, I guess.
I know.
And I distinctly remember being in her classroom, and this was opening night of the school year, I think.
Yes.
And that's when I walked into her classroom, and she had that picture, and I shared that at the very next board meeting.
Of her as the first grader.
Yeah, yeah, it is. So, it's good to see you back, all of you here. So, thank you. Board members, comments, comments or questions for Principal Miller?
Vice President Jokinsen. Thank you very much for the presentation and the hands-on activity and just a little gem of a school there. I remember playing Parks and Rec soccer on your back nine when I was a kid.
They still do it.
And they still do. And getting lost in that ditch down in the other ditch. But anyway...
They still do.
We all did that, so, and they still do, I'm sure. Can you speak more? I love what you spoke on the focus plan time piece. That was really interesting how you, you know, did your time to get that to happen. Can you speak more to, you mentioned the vertical teams here, what that looks like?
Yeah, absolutely. So, typically, with the way that our schedule was run, we'd only have the planned time. So, the collaborative, the collaboration came from the teachers. We used to run PLC after school, which was great, because then teachers could have that vertical collaboration. But the staff, they voted, they wanted to have embedded PLC. So, with that, the way that it works is that we typically can have two grade levels at a time. So, one is on their regular planned time, one is on their focus planned time. But then, they can switch. And so, that gives them the time, so like, 4th and 5th can collaborate together, 2nd and 3rd can collaborate together, which also gives them that time. And when we put out our schedule, we have something planned every single Monday. We would always put out whether this is just a grade-level focus planned time or if it's a combined planned time, depending on what the presentation was going to be.
Awesome. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, just congratulations on the 5E scores there.
Thank you.
And you're strong and mighty PTA and SAC, so thanks so much.
Yes, thank you.
Director Daniels.
Thank you. I absolutely love this. I am so thankful that we have an author in our backyard. And as you said, 23 years of having our backyard of local authors. It just shows you the power that abides in this community. So, thank you for highlighting that. Of course, I have to say, kudos to Mr. Boa.
Mr. Jacobo.
Jacobo. I, you know, congratulations on choosing to say yes to going back to school. When someone pulls you forward and says, "I see this in you," and you say, "Wow." You do? Okay, great, I'm going to step into it. I find that to be the most powerful place in life, because always, you, you're like, "I'm just doing the mopping, I'm good, I don't really need to..." And yet, someone said, "But I know you can do more." So, thank you for doing that. It's always a wonderful thing to see. Again, growing the local backyard, right? And like you said, it is relationships. I know we talk about all that external stuff, but again, it is all about, it's not what you say, it's how you say it. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the foundation, thank you.
It's the foundation. Thank you very much.
Director Rock.
Thank you. So, good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
I was able to visit Grant on Monday, and so, I got a sneak preview. And being in the building, of course, has a different aspect. And I'll just add that the amount of care that was shown and, you know, the halls that are decorated by student art, I mean, that's always a plus. People can see what's going on throughout the building, but art on the walls tells a story too. And right down to the bulletin boards where the students are adding information about what they like or what they want to read. And just, oh, I got to sign two social contracts. I'm sure everybody knows what those are by now. So, I'm respectful and attentive and effort, and I had somebody define effort for me. So, I just want to say thanks for coming in and sharing with us today, and again, for the project. I have a good pollinator for the record. I had a stamp of approval from two or three students, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Rock.
But thanks for, yeah, thanks for giving me the tour, too.
Thank you.
Director Loma.
You mentioned you're a Title I school.
Correct.
What is your percentage?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven?
Yes.
That is beautiful. You wipe out all the, you know, the characterizations of Title I schools, you just knocked them out of the ballpark.
I appreciate it.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, and...
Dr. Bankus.
Did Director Bankus have anything to comment? She does?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead, Director Bankus.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say, I am so sorry that I missed out on designing a pollinator this evening, and I look forward to reading the book. I attended your beginning of the year, and that was certainly an indication of how enthusiastic the community is in coming to Grant and forming that community of students and teachers and kids, all focused on living together, getting along with one another, and striving for excellence. So, thank you for all that you're doing, and I look forward to visiting your school in the near future.
Thank you so much. Anytime. Thank you.
So, thank you. How long have you been the principal out there?
Eight years.
Eight years?
Eight years.
And coincidentally, eight years of performance reading in your thing, so, yeah. It is, it is certainly a reflection of your leadership to not only the performance that your students are achieving, but also the five essential scores that you have. I've visited your school in the past.
Yes.
I've always enjoyed the time that I spent out there. It's a really caring, close-knit community of teachers that you have out there, and I love the focus that you have on STEM, even though you are not a STEM pathway school.
Yep.
The focus that you put on STEM out there by having a dedicated teacher out there.
Yeah.
And how appropriate in this time and age, sometimes when people are in loggerheads over little things, choose kindness, such an appropriate message and a book for our kids. So, thank you for all that you are doing.
Thank you.
What's your current enrollment look like at your school?
Right now, we're about 370.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that includes, you have a pre-K too?
We have a pre-K, it's a Head Start program, so those are not included in that 370.
What do you expect, your, do you have any kind of prediction where you will be next year?
I'm always trying to push for about 400. Right now, we've got about 40 of our Kinders already enrolled. We do kind of our own Kinder Enrollment Day, and we advertise that. And so, we have about 40 families already enrolled, even though with our community, most of our families are going to show up in August to enroll. So, we're feeling pretty confident with our incoming Kindies.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Best wishes to all of you.
Thank you.
I know that just a couple of weeks back, you got done with state testing too, so...
Yeah. They did well.
Yeah, I'm glad that you are past that. I know that that can get to be a stressful time for some of our teachers at least, but I'm glad. Our teachers are doing remarkably well.
Yes.
Throughout the year, so it's not a time of stress. It's just a time when students can demonstrate their learning proficiency.
Show what they know, that's what we ask them. Show what you know, do your best.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we let Ryan leave, there is more significance to the book. This is the book that we sent out for Big Kids Book Club.
Yes.
So, we sent 600 of these books to potential District 11 families as we start to think about, how do we prime the pipeline? How do we get families before they make decisions? How do we, and inside, we, and inside one of the, each one of the books, we gave tips for parents on how they can be literacy partners for their children before they're in pre-K, before they're in Head Start, before they're in kindergarten. So, your impact in writing this book goes well beyond whatever royalties you're getting, which, which I hope are great. But when I think about the lives that you're changing and creating future District 11 students at Grant and at other schools, this is a program that we'll double down on next year, and so, if you've got another book in there to get to writing, we'll give, I mean, one extra planning period if you come up with a new book.
Challenge accepted.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Ryan. If I could get the two students to come up as we switch over.
Absolutely.
And if you can hand me the clicker. Christian and Gabriel, Christian or Pearl?
Christian and Pearl. You get to come back up here, Christian, sit in my chair. You get to sit there and sit right down, talk right to the microphone and think you're a teacher that you want.
Stop it.
Take deep breaths.
No, you said you are not scared when I talked to you.
You already taught me how to build a pollinator, so you're doing just fine.
Do you want to pull the microphone?
Yeah, I'll get it a little closer.
Yeah, there you go. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I'm here tonight to tell you why I love Miss Anderson. This teacher helped me reach my goal in reading. My reading fluency goal was 120 words per minute. She is so kind, and she gives good candy in her class. She, she helps me feel more confident going to 5th grade.
Awesome, thanks. What's your teacher?
Miss Anderson.
Can you give one, and you take one, and you give another one?
Could you stand up, Miss Anderson?
Yes.
My teacher spotlight is Miss Morris. I like Miss Morris because she teaches me new things like long division and decimals. She makes things really fun and rewards us with parties when we do well. And also, she jokes around with us, and she was really funny.
And Miss, Miss Morris, could you please stand up too?
As I say every week or every two weeks, this is the funnest part of my job. Every time you see a student sit here, I am going to remember to lock the rotational part of this chair. But I think maybe quietly, I'm a little bit, you know, off-task sometimes too. The other thing that's just so heartfelt and reassuring is that kids still write on paper and fold notes and put them in their pocket. So, you know, I, I got two of these, I got six of those, and 100 of these everywhere, but just the memories that it brings back to me to see a kid just doing the 17 folds to get it back underneath, and just, okay, what did I say? And then, the great confidence that they, they all have in sharing their love for their teachers. And so, there will be many, I hope, public comments about Teacher Appreciation Month, as well as some resolutions in the board meeting as well. But this idea of just taking a moment for students to thank teachers as we kick off getting stuff done. The first thing we get done every day in District 11 is strong instruction. That is the if-then statement. If we have the strongest instruction, then our children will learn by leaps and bounds. Whatever strategy that it is can always be improved, but constantly getting back to that if-then statement. And so, Ryan, to you and all the Grant team, thank you so much for a great spotlight this evening. Speaking of incredible student success, we have some students up here that were recognized as our Best and Brightest Awards. Taka Montez DiOcho from Palmer High School on the left, who I spend an awful lot of time with. Taka is an impressive young man on his way to Brown University next year. And then, all the way on the right is Anna Lucia from Coronado High School. And then, in between are our Boacher Scholarship semifinalists, Linia Waddell and Natalia Austin, also from Coronado. Our students are meeting and exceeding expectations in the wildest ways. When I met Taka earlier in the year, and he told me, "Thanks, Christian, thanks for your help." Well, as Christian gets, walks away, Christian helped me with my pollinator, and the first thing he told me is bats are pollinators, and so, he helped me make a bat. And for all the things I knew about bats, I had no idea that they were pollinators. So, you taught the superintendent something new. So, thank you. But back to our students who are getting things done. Taka told me that he was an early decision applicant to Brown University, and I'm sorry, I don't know what schools the, the young ladies are going to. But I've been following Taka since he told me he made that application. And then, he went and visited over spring break Providence, Rhode Island. And he is enthusiastic and ready to go, as are many of our graduating seniors, to get on with the next phases of their life and hopefully come back into public service and education to help make the difference that we've been able to help make for them. So, hats off to those four students. This is a celebration of our Science and Engineering Fair for elementary schools at Mitchell High School, was held on, on April 15th on Saturday. I always wonder how much our community does or doesn't know about what happens, particularly in high schools, when kids aren't there. So, just a couple of weeks ago, we had the Board Town Hall at Mitchell High School, and there was a, the Colorado Springs Youth Symphony there. I noticed it because my son, when I lived in Fairfax, Virginia, was part of a similar organization. And I was hearing this incredible music coming from these wee little kids with strings, instruments, and woodwinds, and all the things that was happening, that's not on my schedule, it's not a District 11 event, it's people using our high-quality facilities to ensure that they are a part of the community and ensuring that children are getting educational opportunities. So, here at Mitchell High School, we had over 100 students. Thirty-seven of those students were from District 11. I will call out the, the schools that participated. Edison had 10, Freedom had 16, McCullough had 7, and Scott had 4 students. Seven of those 37 students were award winners for District 11. And so, we are deep into the sciences and engineering. It's so exciting to see our children problem-solve and use the skills that come as we talk about going from direct instruction to competency-based demonstration of knowledge. This is exactly where you'll see that experience come. I have no idea what the scores are on any of the tests for the students that are pictured here, but I am incredibly proud and know that they are on the path to success, because they were able to take that learning and translate it into a project and into a solution. And as you've heard several board members comment over the last couple of weeks, some of our high school presentations have won at the state level and as well, have gone on to national level as well. If you haven't heard, we are just a little bit proud of some of our award winners for Best of the Springs, as supported by the Gazette in our community. If any of these school leaders are here, I know I saw Darren Smith a moment ago. He probably left right before my slide. We didn't ask them to be here tonight, because this is a fresh announcement, but please take a look. We are really changing the dialogue and the culture. We actually, Devera is not here tonight, it's her daughter's 18th birthday, and we, we brought in an outside marketer, and they said that the most damaging language about District 11 comes from District 11. And so, that we beat ourselves up so much that we're not taking a chance to sing and celebrate the incredible strong programming that we have. And so, look here. Freedom and Trailblazer Elementary School voted as best elementary. Jenkins Middle School, who was up here earlier for FBLA, is the best middle school. Coronado High School, for the strong work that's happened at Coronado, I just showcased three students there. And again, as we talk about teacher appreciation, look at our educators there, from Scott from North, Jenkins, Freedom, and from Siva Charter School, as we continue to build out a strong charter portfolio strategy. And don't forget our coaches. We have incredible sports programs. I just got invited to Grant's Girls on the Run training tomorrow. I talk all the time about what extracurricular activities have done for my children and their own path to adulthood. Our coaches and our club leaders matter, and they make a difference. And to see everyone here awarded to be the Best of the Springs is a huge accomplishment and a demonstration of people's schools getting things done, so, getting stuff done. Just a couple of teacher shout-outs in keeping with our Two for Teacher Tuesdays. I'll start on the upper left there. I love what Miss Baldwin was cited for, for unlocking the potential of the students at Midland. Down on the far left there, it's Park Online, Miss Ricks, bringing confidence to students through high expectations. And then, in the upper right, using our Kagan Strategies to make the learning fun over at Taylor Elementary School, thanks to Wendy Wald. And then, Mr. Cruz in the bottom right there, using rigorous lessons to bring science to life for our students. These are just wave-top samples of what happened. We went from one teacher a month to two a month, or one per week, to Two for Tuesdays, to doubling that, because we're just running out of board. because we're just running out of board meetings to celebrate the incredible instruction that we have in our classrooms every day. If you, if you're, if you're a parent and you're in the building, pop on in there and say hello. I was over at, I was over at Audubon earlier today and just popped in and saw all the kids checking out from school. I actually met a kid named Luke Skywalker. I'm probably not allowed to say that out loud, but that was probably the coolest thing that's ever happened to me as a big Star Wars fan, so. May the fourth be with you as we will be saying next week. I do want to introduce, this is one of the things that I asked the board to support as we went through our Fund Balance Task Force. My deliverables were achievement, enrollment, and engagement. I am hyper-focused on those. One of the ways that I wanted to increase our engagement was to modernize the way that we take feedback. We love public comment. I am more than happy to get emails. And we certainly have people who bump into us every time I'm out and about on the weekend and see somebody. People are certainly happy to tell me what they like and they don't like about what's happening in District 11. But we wanted to start codifying the feedback that we're getting. So we partnered with a company that has a technology that's called Let's Talk. And what happens with Let's Talk is it's basically just a repository for where you can click on a button on our website and tell us what's working and what's not working. But it actually directs itself then to the Office of Responsibility based upon the keywords that you put in there. And we are building systems and structures. That is the, that is the genesis of the work of the school district over the rest of this year and for part of next year. Get the system and structure in place so you understand where it is that you can align the resources to solve the problems. And so this is Phase One and we have a 24-hour answer period. Sean Akerts, my executive assistant, and I go over all the ones that come to the superintendent first thing in the morning. And this morning, we actually had, one, "I can't believe you delayed school." And two, "You better delay school." That came out within three or four minutes of when we had announced that we would delay school. And so we're constantly answering those. But the great thing about a program like this is we then will have data to be able to review over time to see where are the concerns from our community. Most of our concerns from our community are felt here at the podium, which is the next thing that happens is public comment. That is not the most effective way for us to get equity of voice. It's not easy to get here to a board meeting. We say it starts at 5:30, it started at 5:40. It'll be 6:40 or 6:45 before you get a chance to make a public comment. You might be at the end of the hour of that, or you might be at the hour of three minutes, which means that you're not given a chance to make that comment. Please, please, please let us know what you need help with, with our district. There's a button on our, on our webpage for Let's Talk. Phase Two will be on school-level webpages starting the beginning of next school year. And so we are super excited for that opportunity and certainly to hear what's coming back from you all. I'm not going to say a lot about this. If you've been paying attention to the district over the last, you know, four to six weeks, you know exactly what this is. I want to thank the city for their partnership. This school zone is operational as of Monday in front of Doherty High School. The city is already reviewing the other middle schools and high schools, not just in District 11's portfolio, but in all schools within the city boundaries. We have the resources, we have the means. Let's not ever have another senseless tragedy that can be prevented. So hats off to everyone on my team, to the community members, to the city, and as well as to just everyone that was impacted by this senseless tragedy such that it may never happen again. Switching over, can I bring Velvet forward for our FSCP spotlights?
I could go ahead and start talking while she's trying to bring it up so we don't spend too much time. So you saw a great, a great example of family-school-community partnership tonight from Grant Elementary. Research indicates that family-school and community partnerships lead to improved student attendance, higher graduation rates, and a deeper sense of belonging. As a part of the work of D11's Family-School-Community Partnership Collaborative, we support schools, but we also want to celebrate the FSCP work being done at our schools. And I want, this month I want to give a shout-out to Natasha Grant, who is the Family Engagement Coordinator for D11, who daily reaches out to schools to try to support them. The FSCP Celebrations Committee, which includes Jennifer Schulte, Nancy Marshmello, and myself, Velvet Stepanik are here to celebrate the D11 schools. So like every month, I want to go ahead and show you the definition that's provided by the Colorado Department of Education. The key here in this definition is active partnering relationships. I loved, I loved that the Grant principal was talking about relationships. Student success is everyone's job. And just as a space launch relies on a team of people working together to plan and complete a mission, family, schools, and communities work together to launch student success. Opportunities take off when we work together. I want to also show again, these are the four essential elements from the Colorado Department of Education, which are creating an inclusive culture, building trust in relationships, design capacity-building opportunities, and dedicate necessary resources. We know every D11 school is working to provide those opportunities to launch student success. But our collaborative wants to celebrate some of the bright spots, so we're celebrating two more schools this month. And the two schools we're celebrating this month are Steele Elementary School and Saban Middle School for their work to launch student success with FSCP. And we hope that when I'm going through this, that you see how some of the work they're doing fits into those essential elements that we talked about. So before we get started, I want, I want the people that are here to support, so it's not just teachers, it's community members and parents and staff that came from Steele and Saban. If you could go ahead and stand up. Don't be shy. Let's give them a. All right, and then we'll get going. So first, I'm going to start with Steele Elementary School. Steele Elementary School is located in the heart of Colorado Springs in the Old North End. I was born here in Colorado Springs, so I know where the Old North End is. I hope all of you do too. It is part of the central area under Brian Reluc. And Steele has a strong parent and community, strong parent, community, staff, and community partners. Let's see. Okay, whoops, sorry. Okay. Understanding where, whoops, I, sorry. Understanding where our food comes from, how we grow it, and how to compost and recycle are key beliefs of the Steele community. Over the summer of 2022, the Steele community gathered together to install a community garden on their playground. The garden provides numerous opportunities for teamwork, collaboration, and exploration of science and nature. There are six grade-level garden beds. Students are responsible for planting, cultivating, and harvesting. There are also seating areas for students to sit and reflect when overstimulated. What, I have to show some pictures of these actual students, didn't they wear? Each grade level has a theme to include an herb garden, a sensory garden, cold-weather plants, edible plants, and vegetable garden. What an opportunity for student success. Look at the looks on their faces, the enjoyment they're having. Junior Achievement's purpose is to inspire and prepare young people to succeed in a global economy. Steele hosts Junior Achievement as they present grade-level lessons on financial literacy, the globalization of business, and careers across the world. I have volunteered at other schools, not at Steele, with JA in grades three, four, and five, but Steele uses JA for their entire school. Kindergarten students are introduced to basic personal economic issues and roles they play as workers, consumers, and family members. First-grade students learn the role of families in the local economy and the workplace through activities. All right, there we go. Second graders design their own donuts as they examine economic opportunities within the community. And third-grade students conduct business operations, make city planning decisions, and examine economic development issues. Fourth-grade students learn about entrepreneurship, economic resources of regions, and complexity of business decisions. Fifth-grade students explore the globalization of business, learn about high-demand careers, and practice entrepreneurial thinking. What a great way to utilize community partners to prepare students to impact our world. All right, come on. There we go. Whoops, I went too far. With the help of community, staff, and parents, Steele is launching student success. And Steele Elementary would like to thank their staff, PTA, parents, and community partners for their active partnership, tremendous efforts, and time commitment to enrich the lives of their students. They, we, they say, "We could not do it without you." So once again, can we go ahead and clap for the Steele community? All right. And next, our second bright spot is Saban Middle School. Saban is located on North Carefree in the D11 Northeast area under Darren Joyner. And it is near and dear to my heart because all three of my sons have attended Saban. Saban has started rebuilding family-school-community partnerships this year and has worked on building strong partnerships with the community as well as a new PTSA and amazing staff to help launch student success. So starting with student-community partnerships, I want to start, these are several pictures, but Saban has worked hard to build these partnerships with the community. Susan Seerly and her team at Tessa have done a lot at Saban this year. They've done a lot of anti-bolting work along with presenting at Parent Night. Saban is also partnering with a group called Kids on Bikes to get more Saban students on bikes as well as working with the Saban feeder schools as well. Saban has three churches who help by providing volunteers, food, and affirmations throughout the school year. A monthly meeting is held with the principal, community partners, Saban PTSA, and the amazing community liaison to coordinate where help is needed. Here's a few examples in the pictures. The first day of school was an amazing success with parents and community members working together, and staff working together to decorate and welcome students. You can see the pictures of the affirmations on the sidewalk that was done by some of our community partners. Staff, parents, and community partners worked multiple times throughout this year to beautify the school on the outside and the inside. In addition, another example is in November, Rocky Mountain Calvary Church and students, staff, PTSA, community partners, and volunteers collected food, planning to fill 30 bags of food for Saban families. They were able to put together 96 complete food bags for the holiday for the Saban community. Great teamwork to support our families. Saban used to have a food pantry, but it had to close during COVID. Thanks to a coordinated effort between Karen Share, Saban staff, local businesses, PTSA, and the Saban web leaders, Saban Square was created again this year. Groceries, clothing, and essentials are available when needed for students and families. The Saban community liaison now continues to help maintain what is needed for the Saban community. Okay. Saban launched a Dads of Great Students Watch Dogs program this year. The kickoff meeting was well-attended. Dads volunteer at a school to provide a positive male role model. They, they provide an extra set of eyes and ears to enhance school security, reduce bullying, and provide a greater sense of campus safety, allowing students and teachers to focus on learning instructions. This year, my husband has volunteered once a month. And I'll tell you, he comes home after doing that with over 20,000 steps and a satisfaction that he actually did help get students back to class and help teachers. Saban Clubs have used family-school-community partnership for success. The Saban Robotics Team could not have been successful without the staff, sponsors, the community members, and the parents who supported students designing and building their robots and the team competitions. Saban was the only middle school in Colorado Springs that had four teams qualify for the state competition. Another club, with the help of parents, a parent, staff, and Doherty High School students, a percussion club, was formed to launch student success and build partnerships with one of our high schools. The relationships and partnerships that Saban is working on are a bright spot for student successes. Thank you to Saban, staff, parents, and community partners for their part in the mission. So can we go ahead and have the Saban community? All right. All right, thank you to Steele and Saban for sharing their bright spots. In addition to this presentation, we will present certificates at each school. And we look forward, I guess there's, we look forward to celebrating two more schools in May. I'm not so sure we'll be doing it in June, but we'll, you know, May for sure. May for sure, because there's lots of schools to celebrate. So I think you can see from the successes early tonight what a difference family-school-community partnerships make.
Thank you.
And that concludes my superintendent's report. Thank you. Thank you, Velvet.
Appreciate it. Yeah, really appreciate it and appreciate all the staff being here too. Board members, any thoughts or comments on the superintendent's report? Okay, seeing none, I do want to congratulate the two students that you mentioned out there, Anna Lucia Ferguson from Coronado and Taka Montez DiOcho. Met Taka too and really want to highlight and spotlight these students. When they get the Gazette Best and Brightest Winners, it's for a body of work that they have done over a period of time, starting from their freshman year all the way up to their senior year. And it's commitment not only to academics, but also a well-rounded portfolio that includes extracurricular activities and volunteering in our community too. So, and then a huge shout-out to all the Best of Gazette winners in the school categories. And these schools are doing amazing. Freedom, Trailblazer, Jenkins, all those schools that were spotlighted out there. And it all happens with, because of that community partnership too, so. Okay, moving on, public comments. Ms. Olson, do we have public comments? Okay. So quickly going over the board protocol. Board meetings are primarily business meetings for the orderly and efficient contact of the business of the district. And as highlighted in our board priorities behind me, we are very interested in building trust and transparency by listening to community feedback. The clear expectation is that this feedback is provided in a civil, professional, and courteous manner without resorting to personal attacks and disparaging remarks. So please be respectful of everyone, board members, staff, and the audience, and maintain the expected professional decorum in the boardroom. It is preferred that you do not single out any one person in your comments, but if you choose to do so, the expectations are that you will address them respectfully. Each of you have three minutes for your comment. A clock will be displayed on the screen to help you through that, so please monitor the clock. If you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking or use a silent applause. We have allocated a total of one hour for public comments. Lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the board or the district. With that, the first one is an action item comment, Teacher Appreciation Month from Ms. Naomi Lopez.
Hello, thank you. This is Teacher Appreciation Month. As an educator in this district and as president of Neighbors for Education, I want to personally give my deepest gratitude to all educators in D11 for the tireless and thankless work you do every day. It has not been easy since 2020, and yet we keep showing up even when others attempt to discredit our work, our professionalism, our character, and our rights to organize as public service workers. On behalf of our communities, I say, "Teachers, we honor you, we see you, we hear you, and we respect you." 116. This month alone, there are 116 educators listed in Board Docs as having announced their resignations. 116, not total for the school year, but just in this month. 91 are licensed teachers and 25 are ESPs. That is an alarming number. Here are the numbers of resignations posted on Board Docs at this same time of each year since 2017. 2017, there were 68. 2018, 57. 2019, 59. 2020, there were no numbers found. 2021, 60. Then the new sitting board members were elected and our then superintendent was pushed into resignation. In 2022, there were 87 resignations, and today, 116. This is a 50% increase during a time when new board and superintendent priorities were made and touted as only one path towards retaining and recruiting teachers. Do you all know why teachers are leaving? Because we do. Teachers trust us as NFE and have shared with great pain the following reoccurring reasons for leaving. And this is hard to say. Not feeling respected, feeling attacked for simply doing their jobs, not feeling physically or emotionally safe in our buildings, negative district culture, being blamed in light of the board and superintendent refusing to take personal responsibility for their failing leadership, having to take on more work due to shorting staffages, unsustainable pay, and being publicly shamed, ignored, and dismissed by this leadership body time and time again. The numbers don't lie and they tell a clear story. What you are doing is not working. As a board, if you care about having quality teachers here in D11 to help us accomplish the very best for our students, you will need to start listening. the very best for our students, you will need to start listening. Take responsibility for when and where you have failed us and make actual efforts to change what we say is not working. One hundred and sixteen resignations in one month, with more rumored to come in the summer. Pretty bows cannot hide the rot being unaddressed within a box. Thank you.
Joe Shaw, Dr. Joe Shaw.
Good evening, Dr. Mel Packham, directors, Mr. Gall. I'm Joe Shaw, elected president of the Colorado Springs Education Association, and it's always an honor to celebrate teachers as National Teacher Appreciation Week approaches. D eleven has a talented and diverse, well-educated and experienced, and perhaps most importantly, committed teaching staff. Families trust public education. They appreciate and expect licensed professionals teaching their children. Licensed professionals that continue investing in their own education throughout their careers. In D eleven, those experienced teachers enjoy and depend on negotiated workplace rights and protections to ensure their authority to make the right decisions for students in the classroom. Their expertise will be part of guiding the district's choices about programming and curriculum. Communities trust teachers, right up there at the top of the list with medical professionals. They understand teachers' dedication to their children because they can see it. Teachers buy supplies out of their own pockets. Teachers' discretionary effort keeps schools and districts afloat, and they volunteer that extra effort out of a commitment to the children of our community. Our teachers work together in solidarity toward a shared goal of making students' futures promising. We teachers value all teachers, and some teachers are not more equal than others. You can't count that commitment or evaluate it with a test, but students feel it and families know it's real. Teachers do the critical work. They're helping children learn to read, and they're writing the letters of recommendation to get them into college. They guide them through working together as teams, they mentor them, and they pave the way to opportunities after school. Teachers are devoted to student success. They're what's right about District Eleven. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcy Reynolds, Ms. Marcy Reynolds, thank you.
I will be quick. I do fold my notes as well still. I am Marcy Reynolds. I am the art teacher at Colorado International Language Academy. I am here as both a parent and a teacher at Cila. My son, John, who was just part of the Jenkins Nationals team, just came up as well. He went to Cila, formerly G V A, from kindergarten through fifth grade. So, as a parent, I loved that the classes were just a little bit smaller. His teachers were able to provide more personalized instruction, differentiated instruction to the students' needs for each student. We loved the family atmosphere at Cila. Now, as part of a staff member, I've been at Cila for seven years. My favorite part about being part of the Cila family, and I do mean family, is the way that we embrace the differences within us. We learn to celebrate each other's cultures and our traditions. We learn to celebrate Dia de los Muertos, St. Martin's Day, and Chinese New Year, but we also have international days where the kids get to learn a little bit about different countries. They learn about the country, hear some music, maybe try a dance. They get to taste some of the cuisine and often do a craft or an artwork based upon that country or region. Our teachers at Cila are native speakers. They're not all from the same places, and I love that our staff does and sees things differently based on our own personal cultures. We understand that communication across multiple cultures is very difficult at times, but it's often met with patience and willingness to learn. At Cila, our staff turnover is minimal, and we all know that we don't do it for the money. That's a different topic for a different day. I believe that our leadership and supportive atmosphere at Cila is why we stay at Cila as teachers. So, I am proud to be a part of the Cila staff. I am proud to be a Cila parent. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole McKinney. Dr. Nicole McKinney, if I'm right, so.
Good evening. I am a pediatrician and a parent to a child with significant special needs in District Eleven. He requires one-on-one supports for academic goals, safety, and hygiene needs. My son came home from school with feces in his hair in December. A confluence of factors led to this situation. His special ed teacher F T E status had been cut this year. Multiple paras familiar with him transferred or retired, and the learning curve for new paras was steep. Several days, my son didn't have a special ed teacher present in his school, or there was only a subpara present for the entirety of sped. He spends minimal time in gen ed because of limited staff and lack of skills to handle behavioral issues. Paraeducators have some of the hardest jobs of any staff members in the district, and they are severely underpaid. This should be rectified as it is a worthy use of budget funds above other less important expenditures. You owe it to our staff, children, and parents, but this alone does not address staffing issues or the problem of supporting children as high-needs as my son. A more multidisciplinary team approach is needed to have them be successful in school. Current staffing shortages carry through from elementary school to middle school and then high school based on my conversations with teachers across the school spectrum. Tonight, policy J L C D C will be proposed on how to implement House Bill twenty-two twelve sixty. This is a bill that requires students to have access to outside therapy such as A B A during their school day. A B A is a therapy that provides behavioral support for children with autism and similar disabilities to help them be successful in the classroom, at home, and in the community. Overall, the policy draft is reasonable and gives students who need such outside services the opportunity to receive them at school as I E P or five oh four team deems fit. It also gives parents a process to appeal a decision to deny such services. I do, though, have two issues with the drafting process and policy. First, parents of children in special ed ought to have a voice in crafting such policies as much as they impact our kids. Do not leave us in the dark and respond evasively to our concerns as we desire to be engaged strong advocates. Second, the portion of the policy draft stating that the district has the right to utilize their own chosen therapy providers only works in the setting of center-based program. In the context of pervasive staffing shortages, could you really realistically provide therapy to the many high-needs children in their neighborhood schools, which is the handful of district-employed interventionists? They won't have the bandwidth to know our children as intimately as the outside therapists who have been working with our children. Wouldn't this be a good opportunity to allow parental choice for us families who have no school choice? "We just don't have the staff for your child" is a mantra at choice enrollment meetings. It takes a huge village to provide these kids what they need. Think about what you would want if you had a child like mine in the district. Having outside therapists come into schools would not encroach on faith. It would help least restrictive environment as well. I would, it would promote collaboration and accountability for a child's team to ensure greater success in school and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Yael Horowitz.
Good evening, President Mel Packham and members of the board. I would like to express my concern over an incident that occurred at the April twelfth board meeting during the general comments section. This forum was used to voice antisemitism freely, and our board chose to do nothing. To date, I have heard of no objection to the falsehood presented, that of Jews being behind all slavery throughout history, that Jews have earned countless funds through the slave trade in this country's history, and that white Christians had nothing to do with that trade. Rather, it was stated that six hundred fifty thousand white Christians died to free the slaves, a confusing data point as it's commonly accepted that approximately six hundred twenty thousand people died in total during the Civil War on both sides, and presumably some of those fought to retain slavery. This claim further discounts the estimated forty thousand blacks who died in that conflict. Mr. Cletus went so far as to suggest that the Constitution stood against slavery, a transparent lie. The infamous three-fifths compromise allowed twenty-five of the fifty-five founders to retain their enslaved peoples and even count them for the purpose of determining electoral numbers. The Constitution very carefully avoided any direct mention of slavery as it was such a controversial issue among the founding states. It wasn't until the Thirteenth Amendment was adopted in eighteen sixty-five that slavery was abolished in this nation, as we all know very well. No, Jews were not behind the slave trade in this country or in any other. In fact, this has been thoroughly researched. Of the over fifty thousand slave owners in the American South, only two thousandths of one percent of the documented total were Jews. This information is easily verified through numerous sources. I make no excuses for them. Slavery then and now is wrong. If someone had the audacity to stand in front of this board and make clearly inflammatory and prejudiced statements about black people, Hispanic people, or dare I say, people of Indian descent, I'm sure the board would have been disinclined to allow them to continue, nor would the board have provided information on how to include these blatant lies in our district curriculum with apparent equanimity and direct their efforts to the superintendent. Why then did our board sit back and let an antisemitic ignoramus do that without objection? There are no words for my disappointment in this board and its eagerness to ignore such bigotry and hatred, do better for the community you claim to represent.
Thank you. Joseph Boyle.
I'm speaking on my own behalf. Two weeks ago, an individual came to this podium and advocated for several books to be placed into District Eleven libraries. The books, which are produced by a well-known antisemitic hate group that abuses the good name of Islam to justify its hatred, are filled with over-the-top statements about people of Jewish background, some of which the individual described from this podium. I've listened and re-listened to the video of those comments, and each time, I felt the same disbelief I felt upon hearing them for the first time. No, that individual didn't go overtime or violate any of the rules laid out at the beginning of each comment session, and the ideas expressed simply seemed too unbelievably outlandish to be taken seriously by anyone. Still, of all the elements of that comment that have kept me shaking my head over these last two weeks, the one that keeps coming to the forefront is the fact that that individual actually wants those books full of anti-Jewish screed placed in our libraries. I sincerely hope that we can agree that there are, in fact, materials that have no place in D eleven schools, that those books, and that those books that were advocated certainly fit that bill, and that we could arrive at that agreement without having to label one another book banners. Regarding another comment that was made by a board member, made by a board member at that meeting, asking for a resolution against white supremacy, it seems to me that a painstakingly explicit definition of exactly what that board member means by the term is called, is called for. As, as a few of many examples, some contend that white supremacy manifests in insistence on timeliness, valuing hard work, the scientific method, among many other manifestations. Others contend that the term automatically and irredeemably attaches to anyone born with white skin. If those are the sorts of things the board member is talking about when using the term, then the board member should explicitly say so in the resolution itself. If the board member does not mean those things when using the term, the same explicit explanation for each of myriad possible interpretations is still called for. Such a resolution would necessarily be volumes long. I have a better idea. Instead of centering a resolution around a hypercharged racial term, which anyone can claim to mean anything they want it to mean and saying you're against it, why not an affirmative statement in terms that cannot be misunderstood and declaring your support for it? For example, we believe that we are all members of one human race, that true diversity is to be found in the unique humanity of each and every individual human being, and that no human being or group of human beings should ever be stereotyped or made to be feel more-than or less-than based upon their immutable characteristics. Please think it over. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Shelton.
Good evening, board members. My name is Joseph Shelton. I am twenty-six years old, and I use he/him pronouns. Today, I signed up to talk about educators leaving school District Eleven and why numbers, but I believe you were hearing about this issue from many others, so I chose to shift my topic. Because the board has yet to vote on the pronouns policy, I'm going to discuss the anti-LGBTQ plus rhetoric that not only this board but many boards in El Paso County and across the United States hold, and the anti-LGBTQ plus rhetoric community organizations push in the name of education. My comments today were inspired by a post seen on Facebook. I remember being in elementary school, and at the end of the year, we would watch movies. One of the movies I can remember watching on multiple occasions was Hercules. Who doesn't love Hercules? The question is brought forth, though, why is it just a movie when we see Hercules kissing Meg? But if Hercules was to say, be, say, kissing a man named Mac, well, that's indoctrination. Many educators start the year by letting students get to know them. Some talk about their families. The moment a female teacher says, "These are my two lovely kids, and this is my husband," well, that's fine. But the moment a male teacher says, "These are my two lovely kids, and this is my husband," well, that's indoctrination. In fifth grade, teachers have a sort of sex ed class. Now, before Moms for Liberty flips their lid and that I said this, let me finish. In fifth grade, they have a class that talks about the changes students are about to go to see in their own, their own body through the years, which is an important class for students to know. During this class, if a cisgender male says, "I am a man," well, that's fine and dandy, my friends. We love that. But the moment a transgender male, male says, teacher says, "I am a man," well, that's indoctrination. When I was in school, in elementary and middle school, we were always told, "You have to stand for the pledge and look at the flag." We think this is fine, but once a teacher places a rainbow flag on their desk, well, that's indoctrination. When we have Bible clubs in schools, well, that is wonderful. I mean, I can't count how many times I've been told and heard that we need Bible classes in schools again, as well as prayer at the beginning of each day. But when we have LGBTQ plus clubs in schools that are promoting themselves through the school, well, that's indoctrination. It is crazy that we have some school board members who sit here today who say that one thing is okay, but the other is indoctrination. It's crazy to think that when Moms for Liberty stepped into the picture, suddenly, things were taught, things that were taught for years have become indoctrination. So, thanks Moms for Liberty for messing up what education has always been. The simple truth is, teaching kids that a group of people exists is not indoctrination. It is education all on its own. Even if it hurts your tiny hearts to hear the truth, it is education, plain and simple. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of public comments. Thank you for being here this evening, sharing your thoughts and comments. The board appreciates hearing from you. Your feedback helps us do our, do our work better. And just to remind the community, too, the general practice of the board is not to respond back to public comments unless something is said specifically that is a violation of what I said right at the very beginning, the protocol that we follow. We give our community their freedom to come and make their speech, and so the board doesn't respond back. And if there is something that is completely baseless, then I do, or it's not the fact that we have, I do remind the community of that. And on that basis, I will say that there is no pronoun policy that the board is considering. The policy that is in front of the board is staff contact policy. So, that's just that one correction out there. With that, we will move on to board member reports. Board members, do you have, oh, do we have the legislative update? Are we, is he available?
He's logging in.
Okay. Okay, can we do that after the board member reports? Is he available? Oh, okay. So, if it is okay with the board?
He can go, we'll have to hear board reports.
Okay. Is it okay with the board if I go in that order switch the legislative updates since he's not available? Okay. Board member reports. Are there any reports from board, board directors? Director Daniels.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge Saturday, April twenty-second, I believe, was the Black Educators, I forgot, it's Ben. I'm losing the acronym. I just know that they had their literacy fair at U C C S, and it was a great turnout. It was their tenth year of supporting the community with free books and different sessions for the students to participate in. It was really a great turnout, and there's a couple of other things happening. I know that Roosevelt Charter School is looking for judges for their annual I know that Roosevelt Charter School is looking for judges for their annual fair that's happening May nineteenth. There is an El Cinco de Mayo Scholarship Gala that's happening on May sixth at four o'clock, so they're looking for people to participate in that. Community Prep is having an open house May third at five-thirty. SEVA is having their soiree at the Entertainment Center on April twenty-eighth, which is Friday. And there's a few other things. Twain's sixtieth birthday is tomorrow at five, and Scott Elementary is doing their renaming dedication on May tenth. So there's a lot of things for us to get involved in, along with, I think, our baseball teams are still going full-fledged with finishing up their season, and of course, everything is looking for fundraising. So if you're interested in supporting various school projects and teams and all of the efforts to get funding, please support. Thank you.
Director Rock?
Thank you. I just first want to say thanks to all who turned out for the Board Town Hall on April thirteenth. The room was pretty full, and I know we had folks watching online as well. Last night was the Taylor Art Night, and it was fabulous, so you should watch for these things. All of the activities Director Daniels mentioned. They did art activities, as well as having so much art on the walls, and then dancing and drumming, folk dancing, and then a talent show. And along those lines, I don't know if Keller's will have all of that, but Keller Elementary is another school doing something tomorrow evening. My calendar says five. Also, tomorrow evening is a resource evening, a community resource night at Mitchell High School. Starts at five. There's a free dinner at five-thirty, and then our very own Velvet Stuponic is going to speak with some Q and A with the DAC, and then several community partners will have tables there with information. And that goes until seven. And as if there wasn't enough to do on Thursday night and Friday night, there's also Red Riding Hood and the Power Mutants at Mitchell High School, and that starts at seven. It's one night only because it's one of the acting classes. Doherty has done theirs, and Coronado had their fabulous performance last week as well with a surprise ending, but if you weren't there, I'm not going to spoil it for you. It might come up at another school. So do go out, attend many of these fabulous events that are happening here in District eleven. Thanks.
Director Chugan.
I'll piggyback on our other board members here tonight. I was able to attend Doherty's play on Saturday. My wife and our newborn came. She slept through the whole thing, so don't worry. She was not interruption, but that was a great play to be at. I also attended the Personnel Advisory Committee last Thursday, where we had kind of discussed the structure around the implementations of the new evaluation format for teachers, as well as next steps on the highly effective evaluation framework that our committee was discussing. So more to come on that. We have some upcoming meetings for that subcommittee, and they are looking for some volunteers if you would like to be involved in the highly effective evaluation structure and what that might look like as we are kind of rolling it out. So if it's something that you are looking forward to or would like to invest in, it is Monday, Tuesday of the next two weeks, but that's something that you would email Ms. Tanya Nash, who's in the back of the room, and if you'd like to participate in that, you can get with her, or you can email me, and I will get you in the right direction. So we would love some more feedback from teachers on that as we build it out. Lastly, Taylor Art Night, I caught the very last end of that. I was able to see the cool hip-hop dancers, which danced better than I did on the stage, and the beautiful artwork that was at every grade level, not just the higher grade levels. I mean, just even first grade stuff was incredible. So a very big kudos to that art teacher there and that beautiful school. What a beautiful school to be at, and just classic, classic-looking and just very unique and more can you say than just a beautiful school? So that's what it is. So other than that, we are looking forward to Mitchell tomorrow night. I'll be at Keller tomorrow night as well. And then if you have maybe missed some of the past mayoral runoff debates, I know there were a couple earlier this week, there's one tomorrow night at the Road Church, and they, I think, require an RSVP, but you can Google "mayoral debate Road Church," and you'll find that. Maybe some tickets available still. It's free, but you got to register. So if you haven't caught one of those, might be good to do that, as just as you get ready for the next election. I know I got my ballot today, so there you go.
Director Loma?
Well, for some time now, I'm going to give you like a background, a brief background. You might, when I came in and decided to run for this board, my goal, and the goals we came were beautiful, we're trying to focus on the board priorities and remove all the left-right jingle going on from schools. And since my arrival, I've been being harassed by this group right here, and they donate to their organization in my name, and they have a right to. But it's, you know, I don't stand for this group. It's the satanic temple. And what caught my attention is that they're accusing me of supporting, let me read it, "continue providing essential support to those performing our satanic abortion ritual." And this is how silly it's gotten here, and at the bottom it says, "Hail Satan." So all I'm trying to do is the best that I believe for children. And so it's gotten really ridiculous, and I wouldn't bring it up, but it came into my D eleven box. So these are some of the things that are not appropriate and shouldn't happen in school districts, but they are. And I just want to let the board know what's happening, and that's about it.
Thank you. Director Daniels, you need to add something?
Yeah, I just, thank you. I just remembered that we did launch the dyslexia therapy program and wanted to share with the community that if you have any interest, please reach out to the district office and learn more. I think the team-
I'm sorry. Can you click your button again? There you go.
Yeah, I was just saying that I think the team is excited, and there seems to be a lot of interest coming through, so please continue to make your requests be made known. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Bankus?
Yes, I wanted to thank again not only the teachers and the students who came in front of the board not only today, but at other board meetings, with their enthusiasm and centering us on why it is that we come together every other week to do the work of the board. Our board priorities set out for us, our focus and our structure, and it's exciting to know that our teachers are so enthusiastic that our students are excelling in all of the things that we're hearing about. And I want to give a shout out to Mr. Gall for making our board meetings so much more inviting and exciting by having student focus, by having spotlights on what's happening in our schools. When we can say that we have twenty-nine students in a program that has been supported for years through the dedication of teachers, through the support from the district, they're all going to Atlanta. That's quite the excursion. That's quite the opportunity. And in addition to this, I am hearing for the first time this Let's Talk program that Mr. Gall has talked about tonight, where concerned patrons can contact the district directly and have their concern sent to the person or the office most closely related to carry on that conversation. That has made and will make a tremendous connection to our community, and I thank you for that innovation. I hope to see, as you said, next year, that that program extends to our schools so that parents can directly contact a central office with their concerns for quick resolution. So thank you again, Mr. Gall.
Thank you, Director Bankus. And I will wrap up with my board member reports, and while Ms. Olson is pulling up some of the presentation that I have, most of it has been covered by other board members and Superintendent Gall, so I will go quickly through this. Superintendent Gall, I picked a cloudy day. You picked a sunny day when you had your pictures out there. I want to thank the city again for installing. I was there on Monday morning. It is a safe school zone. I was there at seven in the morning. The lights were working, and the one thing that I do want to point out that day, our traffic cops were right out there, and if you look at the third picture right down there, they were catching speeders out there. So if you live in that community, please respect the speed limits out there. Our students just want to walk safely on the sidewalks and the crosswalks to and back from from school, and it was a senseless tragedy that precipitated this, but I'm glad that this is in place. So please help us keep our students safe as you drive in that neighborhood. And I want to reiterate again, thanks for the city to quickly step in and be responsive in this regard. I was at the Taylor Arts Night yesterday, too, and our kids were amazing, wonderful performance by our students and Taylor. I remember last year, they applied to be an art pathway school. Things went differently. Columbia and Martinez are the art pathway school, but they have still emphasized the importance of arts in their curriculum, and when you look at the artwork that are on the walls out there, it is amazing. And in that room out there, in the dark room, there were some fluorescent lights, so they kept the room dark. Just walking into that room, seeing all the artwork from our students, just inspirational. I saw Area Superintendent Rilic was out there checking out some of the artwork, and Director Art was also out there. So kudos to Taylor Elementary out there. I had an opportunity to also talk to some of the teachers out there. First, I want to give kudos to the art teacher out there, Emily Warner, and also the invite from Sarah Miller. Talking to some of the teachers, I was asking them, as a board member, what is it that you want, what is it that I can help you out with? And the three, two, three, four teachers that I talked to, all of them, their universal response to me was, "Please don't close the school." Okay? And that came up with the facilities master plan about a year or so back, year and a half back, and Taylor was one of the schools that was potentially targeted for closure. And their response is to reach out into the community and to make a community event out there and get students into that school and get parents and community into that school. But all these teachers want is the school not to be closed. And we got to this point because over the four years, from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-two, we ended up losing four thousand two hundred students, and those are the facts. Those are the numbers, too. And if we end up losing that many students, then it impacts our staff. And we want our staff to stay in District eleven. We want them to be honored. We want them to be, provide competitive compensation and respected for the work that they are day in and day out doing. But it all comes down to, if we don't have students, we can't stay in the business of keeping our schools open. And if you in this community are looking for a niche school, a small school with small classrooms, where they are doing some amazing learning and teaching, this is a school accredited with a distinction, one of a high-performing school out there, and they emphasize art in their schools, so I highly encourage our community to visit Taylor, and hopefully you want to enroll your child in K through five out there. The DAC Spotlight, I was there last week at the DAC, and I want to give a quick shout out to Ms. Martha Woodfork, and she is, when you're talking about teachers retiring or walking away, she's a teacher that has been in the school district for over thirty years, and I'm glad that the DAC recognized her for her hard work. The whole community showed up out there, students and parents of those community, and she likes Disney, so we had Superintendent Gall there that night addressing the DAC, and he had the Mickey ears on. So, and by the way, it was his birthday, too, so I want to thank Superintendent Gall to be out there talking about the Mitchell Promise and pre-K out there, pre-K program to our DAC community. And the amount of time I've seen you spend in public committees and staying up there till eight, eight-thirty, nine in the evening, talking and engaging to our community, it certainly, it is noticed and it is appreciated. And I want to wish Ms. Woodfork happy retirement. And Jason talked about the Doherty Theater, and I was there the same evening and got to see Jason's wife and his daughter out there, too. And I was going to show the picture that I took of the baby, but I decided against it. But these kids put on an amazing display out there. This was as good as anything that I would see in the Pike's Peak Arts Center. Well rehearsed, choreographed, and just a wonderful performance, and you could see the amount of time and the energy and the effort that these students had put into this production. So great work going on at Doherty, and I encourage our community, if you have time on a Friday evening or a Saturday afternoon, check out our schedule and see if a local school is putting together a concert or a theater performance. Director Daniels talked about the dyslexia support, so I want to emphasize on that foot stamp on that, D eleven is offering dyslexia supports now. And my understanding is, and I'm trying to learn a little bit more about this subject, about fourteen or fifteen percent of our kids are diagnosed with dyslexia, and now we have a solution for the students in District eleven. There is a website that is specifically designated out there. A communication went out earlier this week, so please check out that webpage. And it's my understanding that certain schools are going to be identified as tier-three clinic sites, and those are the sites that offer the most rigorous intervention for the dyslexia students, and then there are other schools that offer more targeted intervention at a lower level. So whichever spectrum your student is diagnosed or fall under, take advantage of this and help provide your students that support. And lastly, this Saturday is City Serve Day. This is a wonderful time for our faith community to come together and help out our schools. I saw this being, the church that I attend, they invited our community, our church community, to come and volunteer and serve for two or three hours, helping out Saban or Doherty or any one of our neighborhood schools. You get to spend two or three hours helping out with projects, painting a room or beautifying our teachers, teachers, the location where they break room, and then or landscaping out there. So if you have a couple of hours on Saturday, two or three hours, go to that website that is on there on that link and find a local school that you can take your child to along with you and volunteer. And that's all I have, and before I stop, before I finish this, and I think Director Nelson also had a comment, I'll hand it over to her. And I found out today, today is Executive Professionals Day, and Ms. Olson, I know that you have stepped up and helped us out through this time, and thank you for your service and for all the executive professionals that help us out in our schools and also throughout the central admin building. Thank you. Presser Nelson, do you have a board member report?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. I guess you are back after watching your daughter perform?
Yes, it was an amazing concert brief, but they did a great job singing songs and playing their recorders. I think the crowd favorite was Eye of the Tiger, and then they wrapped it up with a dance performance because Martinez is becoming a visual and performing arts school, so they offer dance and theater as well. And it was, the parents had a blast. I mean, the kids did so well, but I will say the energy of the parents watching was so fun, and still just energized from it, and it was packed. It's so good to have our families back in our schools. With COVID, we couldn't do that, and so my third grader getting to experience having her families come and see performances, it's kind of new for our family because we were coming into D eleven as COVID was hitting. So so good to have families back in our schools. But the other thing I wanted to highlight is, I wanted to speak to- highlight is, I wanted to speak to our Eureka Math curriculum. And if they, I have some pictures that maybe they can show. My son is in first grade. And since we're speaking about curriculum later, I thought it would be fitting to give a mom's perspective on Eureka Math. I love it. As I said, my son's in first grade and they provide very direct guidance to families on the homework. So if he comes home with an assignment and I don't necessarily understand what they're asking, like they're learning shapes right now. And it, there was a question saying, find the square corner. Well, it's been a while since I've done geometry and I didn't know exactly what they meant by that. And so flip back a couple of pages in his workbook, and here's an example of what families and parents can go back and learn what the kids are learning and then be able to use that same language. Like the next slide, if you could go to it, there, earlier in the school year, it would ask to draw. And I didn't know what that meant. So flip back a couple pages and, oh, okay, they want them to draw out the dots or the 10 sticks. And it just was so helpful, especially when, like last week, my son had a double ear infection and missed a couple of days of school. I could make sure he stayed on track and keep him up to speed and using the same language, explaining things that his teacher is explaining in the same manner. So I just wanted to share because, you know, community members watching or parents maybe of older kids don't have the same experience. But I really value Eureka Math and that we made this transition as a parent. And especially our conversation last week at the work session about wanting to engage parents and having them be involved in their children's school work and their education, how vital it is to their success. And this is just a great example of how we've made a move already that is going to help with that. And so just wanted to share with everyone my appreciation for the transition that we made to Eureka Math and the math workbooks that go home, because it really helps families know how to help their children. And that's all I've got. Thanks for letting me jump back in.
Thank you. Moving on, are we ready for the legislative update?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Pepper. I know that you are busy out there. So what do you have for us? Hopefully, you've got some positive news from the legislature.
We do have some positive news. So since the last time I talked to you, we wanted to highlight tonight, the School Finance Act. And this is something we spent a lot of time and a lot of effort on over the last three weeks. And I'm really happy to be able to report the changes that we were able to make. So since the last time we spoke, the 3% cost of living adjustment was removed from the bill, as well as lowering averaging from five to four years, were both removed from this year's School Finance Act before introduction. Both of those would have had a significant impact to D11. And getting them removed was a significant win for us. Additionally, we were able to increase the buy down of the budget stabilization factor from 120 million to 150 million. And then we added a budget, an amendment in the Senate Education Committee that bought the budget stabilization factor down to $180 million this year. And the changes that I'm reporting really were the work of the coalition that we were able to build, starting with the letter that Director Malpakam and Superintendent Gall wrote, really laying out our vision for what we wanted to see in this year's School Finance Act. And so with that, we were able to build a coalition of districts across the state representing more than 700,000 students to say, you know what, members of legislature, members of General Assembly, here's how we think the state should invest its money this year. And in total, the states have invested $9.1 billion into Colorado schools, which is the single largest increase in school funding in the history of the state. And like I said, this bill bought down the BS factor by $180 million, bringing the per pupil funding in D11 to $10,454. And this is roughly $1,000 increase per funded student. That wasn't all that was in the bill. The bill also did $30 million in one-time money for rural schools. The proposal I had discussed with you last time would have provided ongoing funding for rural schools, but would have come out of that 3% reduction in the cost of living. This legislature instead decided to do its fifth year of one-time funding for these rural schools. And then we'll create a task force to study how we can create a new rural or small size factor within the existing school finance formula. This bill also does $23.5 million for middle levy overriding match program. And what this does, this was a bill that was passed last year that targets rural districts as well as limited property wealth districts, that when they go to their voters and they pass middle levy overrides, the state essentially matches a portion of that. The problem was, the way the bill was passed last year, only two districts were really receiving funding from that. So this year, they increased the funding and changed the eligibility to make sure more districts who pass middle levy overrides are able to access this state program. State also invested $10 million in best money to assist charter schools with their capital construction needs. They did a $10 million fund to the pre-K program, which is to maintain the special education maintenance of effort requirements during the transition of the new Department of Early Childhood. They did an additional $2.5 million for CSI middle levy equalization, $1.1 million for gifted and talented universal screenings, $500,000 essentially for a grant program to assist non-English speaking parents and guardians with translating their IEPs, and then $300,000 to address the transition away from prohibited mascots. Finally, this bill created a school finance task force, which will be made up of school finance experts from around the state and not members of the General Assembly. Their thinking behind this is, we have seen seven years of the General Assembly School Finance Interim Committee not really be able to reach a resolution or find a solution on how they want to change or redo the School Finance Act. The hope is that if we get the experts in a room, that they will be able by December 15th of 2023 to make recommendations to the General Assembly on changes they would like to see in the School Finance Act. Additionally, the task force is required to set parameters to examine the adequacy of school financing Colorado. And then the one, what I would call a concerning part is that they are going to look heavily at cost of living factor and how this can be distributed more equitably throughout the state. So I am really happy to present this School Finance Act to you. It is really positive for D11. And I want to thank Chris, we've been texting a lot, but we got, we got to a good spot. And I'd open it up for questions there before I move into other, other, other legislation.
Well, thank you. Thank you for sharing that positive news. It looks much better than what it did two weeks back when you talked to us at that point in time. Board members, any questions or comments about the School Finance Act, the information that Mr. Pepper shared with us? Looks like your explanation was crystal clear. We don't have any questions. Any bills specifically that?
I want to comment and thank Dylan for the help on the School Finance Act. We had several conversations happening a couple of weeks ago that were actually moving the potential budget line down $10, $12 million. And the collective voice, and this is the point I really want to emphasize, the collective voice of how a lobbyist like Dylan and the connections that he was able to bring to get many districts on signature, to make the point of, we are certainly not against the needs of the rural districts in our state. We are for public education opportunities for any and all students in the state of Colorado. But to steal from Peter to pay for Paul was not going to put the legislators in a good position to present a balanced budget for the constituents, what they serve. And so we see that, 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 that call to action was heard. And as we all know, if you make enough noise, there can be alternative solutions. And so we're super excited about this budget. As we've mentioned many times, we will make and we will present the strongest strategically aligned budget to the needs of this school district to ensure not only its immediate growth and achievement enrollment and engagement, but its long-term, long-term health and stability. And Dylan, your reporting has been instrumental in that. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Just quickly, I wanted, because I know we're a little short on time here, I just wanted to run down some of the other funding bills that we previously discussed. Senate Bill 99, which is $40 million for special education funding, this will fully fund Tier B Special Ed. It passed the House third reading on April 21st, and it is now heading to the governor for his signature. Senate Bill 220 did $25 million for Building Excellent Schools, say the best grant program. And that bill passed out of conference committee. We're waiting on approval of both the House and Senate, and that, too, will be heading to the governor. Senate Bill 23219 did $18 million to implement a new facility school funding model. And then finally, they did an additional, which I've talked about several times, $15 million for categorical programming, which includes English language learners, transportation, small attendance centers, and career and technical education. So all in all, this really was the most significant funding year in K-12 that the state of Colorado has had. And it really is good news to report tonight. Just quickly jumping into the other bills, I wanted to start with the bill we've been tracking closely, which is House Bill 1231, which is math and pre-K through 12th grade. This bill passed out of the House last week and remains largely unchanged since the last time I talked to you. It still includes $25 million for CDE to make available free optional trainings for educators in math education. This bill, after it passed the House, was heard in the Senate Education this, this week, and it is awaiting an appropriations hearing on Friday. Bill we highlighted last time, House Bill 1239, related to local innovation assessments, was postponed indefinitely on a unanimous vote at the request of the sponsor. The sponsor, Representative Eliza Hamrickson, spent the summer working on this, trying to find a solution that works for everyone. House Bill 1241, the School Accountability Draft, just about an hour ago, passed out of the Senate Education Committee on a unanimous seven to zero vote. And it'll also be heading to the Appropriations Committee likely on Friday. The bill we highlighted last time on the creation of the Office of School Safety, which included $26 million for a variety of school safety resources, was passed and approved in both chambers and is awaiting the governor's signature. And then a bill we've highlighted a couple of times, House Bill 1003, Mental Health Students continues to move through the process. It is, they were able to reduce the fiscal note to $3 million, and it passed out of Senate Appropriations Committee on April 24th. It has not yet been set for a second reading in the Senate. It will have to go back to the House for a final vote because changes were made in the Senate. And then just from a, kind of where we are in session standpoint, we have 13 days, now almost 12 days left in legislative session. There are still 325 bills remaining to go through the process, which means they are going to struggle to get everything that they wanted done. We anticipate seeing the governor's property tax proposal either tomorrow or early on Friday. Once we see that, we will really have the full funding picture for the state of Colorado as we look into the next two years. That property tax proposal did include a $200 million set aside from the Joint Budget Committee, which would essentially backfill any lost property tax revenue to school districts for two years. So as soon as that's out, we'll share that with you. But right now, that was kind of the update I had. It's going to be fast and pure. So I'll make sure to update you guys as we continue on.
Well, thank you. I mean, what you're saying, that there are more than 300 bills still that they have to figure out in 12, about 12 more days. So it's going to be some long nights out there for you, too, Mr. Pepper. So any comments? Yeah, typical at this time of the year for you. Any comments or specific questions about any specific bills from board members? Director.
Thanks. Just a follow up, Dylan. Did you say the governor's tax, property tax proposal is coming out on Friday?
It would, that's what we anticipated. It'll either be late tomorrow or early Friday. We believe it's likely going to be a two-year extension of what we saw last year, which reduced the residential assessment rate from 6.95 to six point, like 7.6 or 7.5. That's what we anticipate seeing at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions. Again, I want to thank you, like what Superintendent Gall talked about, two weeks back, when we heard about the direction the School Finance Act was going at that time, we reached out to you and you were really responsive in putting together a collective response. It only took us three or four days. And by Monday, the direction of the School Finance Act had quickly changed to the positive where we are right now. But I'm sure this is going to be a topic that is going to get revisited a year or so, whether it is going to be the COLAS, cost of living, or the five-year enrollment averaging. So we will keep an eye on it. Thank you so much. Keep, keep us posted. If anything comes up that needs our attention, inform Chris Odom. And we will wrap up in a couple of weeks with your final presentation to the board at that time.
I have a question before you leave.
Okay, Director Bankus.
Yes, did I hear a property tax increase? And what's the difference with, if I heard correctly, then the difference between what the current property tax is and what the proposal is, is how much?
So it would be, it, it would be a reduction in property in the residential assessment rate, not an increase. So it would reduce the residential assessment rate from 6.95 down to 6.76. And that's to help offset the increase in property taxes that we're all going to face, really across the state of Colorado. And the cost of that reduction is $200 million. And the state essentially will backfill the lower property tax amount that the, that the local governments like school districts are collecting with state money.
I see. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Director Nelson, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pepper.
Have a good night. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah. Moving to the next item of the agenda consent items. Director Art, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
Thank you. I moved that the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are E2, approval of April 12th, 2023, regular meeting minutes; E3, approval of personnel recommendations for April 26, 2023; and E4, approval of policy KDE crisis management.
Second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakam?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the consent items have been adopted. Moving on to the action item, the first one is a contract award, contract to Cisco Security Enterprise Agreement. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item F2?
Yes, I moved that the Board of Education approves contract C2023-0008 to Converge One for the Cisco Security EA Solution Licensees Maintenance and Support at a total contract value of $2,160,338. If fully executed, the contract will end June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Gall, this is a new item. Could you introduce your staff?
Chief.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Gall. Good evening, Board of Education. Tonight, I am bringing you an agreement that spans a five-year period to provide an essential cybersecurity solution. We will be able to spend existing earmarked ESER funds for this current year and the next two terms ending June 30, 2025. The remaining two contract terms, Chief McCarron will fund from his IT budget. With me tonight is Mr. Ray Kaplinger, our Director of Network Services. And I believe our procurement staff is, is also present. The contracting officer that led this initiative was Mr. Adrian Williams and the interim executive director, Ms. Rosa Garcia. So why do we need this? And what all is included in the Cisco Security Enterprise Agreement? Well, we need this because at the onset of the pandemic, we pivoted to a one-to-one student device model for instruction and curriculum delivery. This required us to have a comprehensive, integrated security solution to place and to mitigate cybersecurity risks from from wireless devices going back and forth from unsecured home networks to the district network. The Cisco Security EA Agreement will address the imperative district need for additional cybersecurity. Since a significant portion of our daily instruction remains online, and we have committed to a one-to-one device capability, we must be able to monitor and track, excuse me, monitor and track cyber threats. K-12 is currently one of the most attacked sectors since cyber, uh, CRIK's perceived districts are less protected. This solution will provide for an updated cyber solution and comply with all components required by our cyber liability insurance policy. Specifically, the Security EA Agreement provides a suite of security tools to enhance and expand our cybersecurity framework. This includes malware, phishing, online access, hacking attempts, and ransomware intrusions. Cisco Security EA enable network services to do more automated monitoring and blocking of threats and add additional search and identification capabilities. It includes Duo Education Access Suite, which is that two-factor authentication that we require. It also includes Identity Services Engine, which is the identity-based network access, control, and enforcement. Advanced malware protection for endpoints, server and workstation protection. AnyConnect, which is the unified security endpoint for VPN. It also includes firepower firewall support. TOS Incident Response, which services to help prepare, respond, and recover from incidents. And finally, the Umbrella Security System for adware, malware, botnets, phishing attacks, and known bad websites. The procurement department did compete this requirement under full and open competition, resulting in a lowest-price, technically acceptable solution. Proposals received offered similar solutions, but at a much higher cost. Converge One was ranked as the best overall technically acceptable lowest-price solution and is a Cisco authorized gold level partner. The five-year total of this contract is two-million-one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars, which spans services between July one, two thousand twenty-two, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. Initial ESER grant submission did not detail that this was a five-year bundled price package and therefore required further conversation with CDE to ensure we are in compliance with the federal ESER grant. The end result requires us to pay annually. Therefore, the first three years can be funded out of our ESER grant, beginning July one of two thousand twenty-two, with the third annual payment ending July one, two thousand twenty-four, with the remaining two final terms to be funded out of Mr. McCarron's general fund. This concludes my overview of the, uh, solicitation process. The final resulting contract does have our district software terms and conditions. At this time, I turn it back over to the board for any questions you might have that Mr. Kaplinger or myself can answer.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for also being here.
And the work that you put in, uh, before bringing this contract in front of the board. Comments or questions? Director Daniels.
Thank you. Um, I'm just curious about, uh, because we've been on those devices for a number of years. What happened that we're just seeing this as a, oh, we need to, you know what I'm saying? So did, did we have a breach? I mean, I know we've had a breach. I know we've had a breach. But is it, like, continuously happening that we're now looking at Cisco? Or were, were we involved with an organization but finding that Cisco is giving us more parameters of security? Is that making sense?
So, uh, let me try and address why we're now moving to this, and then why it was technically superior, the Cisco offering. I would have to ask Mr. Kaplinger to come up and answer that part. So I'm gonna answer the why first, and then you answer the Cisco. Sound good? Okay, so our risk management that oversees our self-insurance policies identified approximately four years ago, pre-COVID, that cybersecurity was becoming a requirement for our liability insurance. But it just became exasperated with the COVID. When we moved to a one-to-one device environment, it was just absolutely required. What it prevents is huge. So that is the why behind it, why we have to have cybersecurity, um, platforms and software to protect our data. I'm gonna let Mr. Kaplinger address what the Cisco offering brings to the table.
And, and part of the reason why we chose Cisco is that they had a complete enterprise, which is why it's called the EA. It's an enterprise agreement that encompasses everything that we need for the cybersecurity part. So it covers our servers, covers all, all of our malware, covers everything else in the district. And it became really important when the pandemic hit, because that's when we went to one-to-one, when ESER funds bought all the Chromebooks, iPads, and laptops all up for the students that we distributed, and everyone was working from home. Then we came back in, then people are taking their devices home, use them on their network, which is not secure, and then bring them back in the district. And then we got all this malware going around to do that. And then, um, we get notified by our cyber, uh, carrier when they see someone logged into something else and said, oh, you know, do you guys have a chance to be hacked? And most of the time, we found the things already with all that, but it's, um, with all the different things going on, we just have to have that with a thirty-five-thousand devices, including servers and everything, to get that, because if, if we were like someplace else that got hit by an attack or something and had ransomware, then our cyber, um, carrier would cover that up to a certain amount and everything. So we've been doing everything we can to try to prevent that. But, um, we need automated methods and all that, and that's what this, what these, uh, Cisco portion is. So it covers the whole gamut of everything we need for, uh, security stuff.
Are you good?
Yeah, I have another question.
Director Jorgensen.
And so my question, I think you answered just part of it there. We have students and staff, you know, their personal devices, um, not their personal devices, their personal networks that are on a home, coming back on a district networks, the, the pieces that are, you know, at play there. How does this then, does this product alleviate any of the manpower or monitoring services that we are currently doing and, and having in our team?
And, and what we've got in place with the, with the Cisco stuff is we've got blocks going out. And until we get the amp for endpoints distributed, everything, which then does the malware protection for all the different things for district devices. So right now, as I said, we're just blocking it from going out to outside nefarious, um, hackers and other things, so, so.
Okay, so above and beyond what we have right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Director Daniels, you need to finish.
I'm just curious of... So this system will need to have some type of consistent monitoring as well, al- along with all of the changes that's coming through with IT. I know we're going through to, uh, twenty-twenty-seven, but I'm just feeling like, I don't know why this is showing up. How come we didn't have this before? Like, when we were talking about the budget and, and looking at all of those things, like, why wasn't that a part of the conversation?
So this was part of the budget, it's just the contracting process has now brought it to us here. These were part of, I believe, the fund balance task force. And just because of the size of the contract, the previous board, um, uh, tacit approval of how we spend that money then has to loop back here because of the size of this, correct, Chief Odom?
Correct, correct. We did bring this under the fund balance. Doctor Mal Pakem? Did we get your question answered?
Yes. So the money was, uh, appropriated already and set aside, and we are awarding the contract right now. Did somebody, uh, did, okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Director Bankus.
Thank you. So I am glad to hear that we are on the forefront of, uh, developing technology so that we can prevent a major breach in our system. I would like to have the assurance that this is a time-tested, um, program that we are entering in and that, uh, it will be a flawless, uh, transition into this cyber protection.
Thank you. I think she just made a comment.
No, I want to hear that there has been prior, um, uh, evidence that this, um, program that we're entering in has a history or, uh, some sort of background that assures us that they can take on the size of this endeavor. We're talking about a lot of computers, a lot of, uh, devices that are being protected. And my assumption is, is that, uh, as Director Jorgensen said, they go home and they are on private networks. Then when they come back, I'm making the assumption that when they come back, our security and login to the school system, that they are scrutinized and scrubbed so that they don't infect our networking systems.
I'm gonna try and answer your question, Dr. Bankus. So, um, the Cisco product that we are implementing has been tested. We have been using it. It expired. And then we went out to recompete for a new contract. And then because of the fund balance initiative process, the ESER grant process, the clarification with CDE on how we can use ESER funds for pieces and portions of this, took us a little bit of time, but we are currently using this product right now. It's been tested, and the partner that we are trying to enter into a contract with, um, we have, have a longstanding relationship with them.
Thank you. That takes care of that. The second part of my question deals with, uh, the compute, the devices coming back to District eleven, um, internet connections. Are those devices then scrubbed of any malware that they may have picked up on another, uh, platform at, uh, off-site?
I believe annually that when the students turn in the devices, they go through the Technology Services, which is separate from Mr. Kaplinger's Network Services Department, and they do go through a, a sweep or cleaning, if you will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments. Um, thank you for the presentation. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus? Director Bankus?
Yes.
Uh, we're, uh, voting. Roll call, please.
Oh, aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the contract has been approved. Thank you for the work that you guys did in, uh, bringing this contract to us and, uh, also using the ESER money. Uh, we need to make sure that we use that before the deadline, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item, um, budget transfers appropriations and FTE approvals. Uh, Director Nelson, uh, are you able to make the motion for this action item F-three?
Sure, let me just get to it.
If not, I can ask another board director here to make the motion, too.
Uh, no, I found it.
Okay.
I, I moved that the Board of Education approves the three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand capital reserve contingency fund transfer to Contract for Consulting Design Services to develop a facility plan that aligns with the Academic Master Plan, AMP, in accordance with Policy DBJ.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, this is a new item, Superintendent Gall.
Uh, sorry, it's Jennifer and Hannah, thank you. Can you please come forward and brief the board on the roof challenge?
Well, this is, this is to develop a new, uh, facilities plan.
Oh, sorry. I was off task. Thank you. Go ahead.
Um, which is, um, going to help align our, uh, physical spaces to the academic's, uh, plan, the Academic Master Plan, as well as other, um, academic alignment. Um, as you all may know, we had a, uh, Facility Master Plan completed a couple of years ago. Thank you for your time on that, uh, for those that were involved. It was a very rigorous process, but it was also very facilities-focused without the Academic Master Plan. Excuse me, and this will help align both facilities and academics.
And could you introduce yourself again and what, what your role in the district is?
Thank you. Yes, I am Hannah White. I'm a project manager in the Facilities Capital Program.
Okay, and you, Matt?
I am Jennifer Hotelling. I'm the, um, interim assistant, or I'm the interim capital program manager.
Thank you.
So in keeping with the process of preparing the board for a decision on when to go for a bond, there were, uh, three items. The first was demographer's study, which that contract was let and completed, and that will come to the board on May third, uh, for a work session for an update. The second was a refresh of the Facilities Master Plan to be in alignment with the Academic Master Plan. That RFP has been, um, um, sourced, and this is the contract award for that. Because of the size of the contract, again, we were coming to the board for that. These are cri- and then the third piece would be the polling that would go if the, as close as possible to when the board would make the decision for the timing of the bond. If the board were to want to make a decision for November of twenty-three, it is certainly extremely critical, because we will already have the company that we seek to make the award to , uh, ready for a draft in June of what that FMP would look like. However, even if the board seeks to then delay until November of twenty-four, this is a source document that is absent from our work going forward. Although the data in the existing Facilities Master Plan is helping to source this new Facilities Master Plan, it lacked vision of where we're seeking to be as the Colorado Springs School District twenty-fifty, which is our goal as we build a Facilities Master Plan going forward. So we think this is a critical component that we ask the board for their support, uh, and as we have aligned the monies for it, to be able to be prepared to give the board the information that they need to decide on the future of a potential bond initiative. Even without a bond initiative, this FMP will serve as a source document to become the academic support plan for the Academic Master Plan. And that main shift being, how do we program our spaces specifically around the academic needs of our children instead of the way we currently work, which is force academic programs into exist- existing spaces? I think anyone who has seen architectural renderings of how, uh, communities can be invested in facilities to improve academic experiences and outcomes will see that we are woefully behind. And so again, regardless of the timing of the, of the decision on the bond, we feel this is a critical need for us to be able to continue to just carry the capital budgets project and see where we align those dollars going forward. And sorry for the misalignment. I don't, I have a, I have a, what do I have the, is there a roof thing coming tonight as well? Or is that a different board meeting? That's a different contingency transfer. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we appreciate that feedback, too. Director Daniels.
Thank you. So you're, you're coming in as designers to tell us where we should house specific programming so that our students will be able to centralize CTE or whatever pro- is, am I asking the right question?
I understand your question, and, um, I believe it's the other way around.
Okay.
We, um, we've hired a company- We, we've hired a company that is a consultant and designer, not just design, to help us align our facilities to the Academic Master Plan. We're not, we're not telling the Academic Master Plan where to house things. We're going to make our facilities able to support the needs of the plan and educational adequacy.
So we're looking at a central location for something or we're looking at the whole?
It's the entire district.
This is district-wide.
Yes. Yes, it is.
This is similar to the last facilities master plan in understanding what are the overall facility needs for the district going forward, taking the information that was already sourced from the FMP, but now aligning it directly to the Academic Master Plan. As an example, the idea that we talk about at Arts Integration School, I will often get glibby and say, you should be able to jump into a sidewalk painting, you know, like Mary Poppins. We're thinking about how do we build forays in a STEM building or in a STEM school where a student has a block and, block and tackle system where kids can pull up their parents and show the levers and the way that science works. So how do you like bring a children's museum into a school setting instead of just walking up to Martinez? There's nothing about Martinez that says this is an art school other than a really cool logo. We believe that our facilities should speak to our community about the programs that exist within it. Those are just pathway examples. There are certainly tons of CTE opportunities, but there are just really core functional items that we want to make sure that we are prepared for in the future as monies do or do not become available through bonds and COPs and other ways that we go forward. Right now, our capital plan isn't really aligned to the overall needs of the district. My opinion is our capital plan is managing itself in a very short-term perspective. We don't talk about a capital plan that says, within five years, we want to program dollars to ensure that all instructional spaces are in, are air-conditioned. What we do right now is we say, here's $500,000, go fix that one school. But we're not communicating to our community an overall story of how it is that we seek to be a school district of destination going forward. This facilities master plan will give us that roadmap, using much of the data that already exists, but flipping it into a story that works for our community. And, and you've heard me say before, Director Daniels, in a facilities master plan, there are no things as vestibules. There is safe entry and exit to buildings. Community understands safety. They don't understand if a vestibule provides that or doesn't provide it. We need to flip the conversation space and we have found both a designer, what would you say, a designer and an architect or what was the?
It's a master plan.
Yeah. The, the company that we see.
Consultant.
Consultant, designer and a consultant, that we think can meet both of those needs. And went through a full RFP process. I don't know how many we started with, but I was part of the panel that went through the last two. And I think it was a unanimous decision of where we landed for this recommendation here tonight.
Okay. You have a follow-up question?
Yeah. So I just want to make sure I understand. So you're, you're going to give us a visual of what you're saying an art school could look like at Martinez? Because what we were discussing in the FMP and AMP did not fully get the community to understand why the bond should pass?
Right. I would argue that we fell short of completing a vision for our community. I think we told a story about what was wrong with the system, but I don't think we told a clear story of what we wanted the system to be. As an example, in the last FMP, we had committed to closing Galileo and closing Queen Palmer and Taylor to rebuild an elementary school on Galileo. I think what you would want to do in an FMP is to communicate that we would love to go through a process with our community to ensure a new building in every high school quadrant of the city, of which we would have a collective conversation with our community. So now nobody's losing a building. Certainly, you're probably going to build on a space you already have. But when you say you're going to close Galileo, Queen Palmer and Taylor, you now have three communities that are angry when what you were trying to say was, we're going to build a new school on Union Boulevard, which is a great opportunity. But we lost the opportunity to think about the future because nobody likes closing a school. Having done that before, you never win. Sometimes you have to do it and you got to take the punches for it. But our facilities master plan spoke too much about facilities and not enough about the needs of how facilities support the educational experience.
We'll talk later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Director Ott?
Thank you. So the motion here is a budget transfer. It is not a contract award. Oh, and I see Chris coming.
That's right. This is a budget transfer. This is not a contract award. This does not require Board of Education approval. It requires funding and that's why we're here tonight. We can't award the contract without the funds.
So will we see the contract later or because?
It does not require, but we're going to come back and bring you an outcome
of what the deliverable looks like. Okay.
But the contract doesn't require board approval. If we give you a deliverable that shows you an update maybe near the end of June at a work session, mid to end of June, does that, that's when one of our first deliverables will meet. Does that meet the needs?
Well, I would certainly hope, I would hope that we as a board would see a deliverable since it'll help us with the bond question. Yes. Mostly it was just, I wanted to clarify, this is not us approving a contract.
That is a correct statement. This is not you approving a contract. This is you approving a fund transfer.
Okay. Then a couple of questions. One, I'm, I'm going to note, well, there are hard truths to be faced if we cannot put students in our schools. And hopefully we will and, and yes, opportunity is a great invitation for people to support us and just get excited about our schools. Will they have indications in this plan if they believe we need to shut down the school?
They're being shared the demographer's study as well as the capacity report. This is a fully vetted process of which people do understand that there are gross challenges and inefficiencies of how our schools are currently staffed. There is no Pollyanna thing that makes me believe that we're going to go from averaging upper 60s to low 70s in our middle schools, at nine middle schools, that that's going to disappear overnight. But we will have to have a conversation on the board is, is there value in closing a middle school to get to an 85% utilization? When you think about what the capital cost or political cost with the community is to do that. This is, and so I just, I thought we started with this before. When we, we talked about this earlier, we provided the three steps that we, that the board approved for us to get to a bond decision, which was a demographer's study, an updated facilities master plan. And then when those two were presented, the desire of whether or not the board wanted to go for polling for specific language of what the, what the bond would look like. So this is a previously discussed topic of which, thank you for the clarification, we are asking for a budget transfer to complete our previous obligation to the board on this topic.
Thank you. I'll continue. And mostly that was just, my questions are because before, we did it in-house. And, and I also wanted that clarification. So two more questions.
We didn't, we didn't do the FMP in-house. We outsourced that to cooperative strategies.
That's right. Thank you for the reminder. Yes, I remember now, those meetings.
Yes.
And more meetings. All right. Will this include more than just schools? You mentioned overall district and I mean, we have other buildings like this one that support the greater effort. And I'm curious if this will be included as part of the evaluation.
The goal for this was academic alignment, so the entirety at this point is focused on schools.
Okay.
Not support buildings.
All right.
We do have data on support buildings that we gathered through the original facility master plan and that will be included in the overall, the overall list of projects that are required. But it won't be the focus of the engagement, the conversations, the, and the overall ideas of what we do with our schools.
Okay. Thank you. And then my last question, which you just gave me a great segue. And, and to Chris's point, we didn't do this before in-house, and I can't believe I forgot that, was community involvement and cooperative strategy supported that? So community engagement, ideas, feedback, are, is this group going to go to our community? I mean, it was so extensive before, so I'm curious what, that will be.
Sure. It, it was extensive. It was exhausting. And then, as you know, towards the end, we had maybe four or five participants left hanging on. We do plan to engage not only with the community, but with educational leadership, executive directors, which we've already started that process. But as you also heard, the timeline is very short. So we plan to have, I believe in May, we are going to have three community engagement events at three different sites. The company that we've hired is also going to meet with our executive staff separately from that. Then they're going to develop some ideas, some plans, and then we'll in June likely have three more engagement events to see how the community responds to what's been developed.
Will, so you're going to meet with the executive professionals? It sounds like we'd be meeting with teachers who are in the classrooms and maybe ESP who are supporting everybody?
Yes. We, we would, we would like all of the teachers to come to the community engagement events. Because of the schedule, there isn't time to have many, many meetings. We're hoping to gather the information in a handful of meetings.
Okay. And last one, you know, a very important audience would be students.
Yes.
Do they, are they going to check in with students or do parents need to just, just plan on those meetings?
The students will be invited as well. We will be sending out surveys and invitations through the D11 loop, which goes out to parents, PTA students, everybody that's involved with the district will, will be invited to these. And we'll have opportunities to fill out several different surveys along the way.
All right. Thank you.
Director Nelson?
Curious what kind of guidance has been given to the company as far as, are they told, hey, even think about building new schools or other than the AMP? Which a, a follow-up question would be, our AMP, I know we get regular updates on where we're headed, which I greatly appreciate. I would say our AMP is kind of currently a pinpoint in time of, we are headed down implementing these pathway schools. But in five years, what is our AMP going to look like? I don't know if we've had those kinds of conversations, at least I'm not really being able to remember them at the moment. So if we're asking this company to come up with a facility master plan that is a 20, 30-year plan for District 11, but yet our AMP only goes out for, you know, implementation of, of pathway schools in the next few years, I, I'm just curious how they're going to project what our 20 and 30-year needs are when I don't know that our AMP even goes out that far.
So the, the AMP is one of the goals. Educational adequacy in all of our schools is the number one goal. Also, this is a 10-year plan because we did do a 20-year plan with the last facility master plan and realized things that, that things just change way too fast for that. 10 years is also quite long, but if we need to redo it, at least we have something to, to go on for quite a long time. And Superintendent Goll has indicated that new builds in each quadrant is a desire for the district. And I don't know if you want to expand on that, Superintendent Goll, but that's.
Yeah, I, I know that I've been beating at least what I believe is the vision that I'm feeling from our community and the feedback that I get from students, from teachers, from staff, which is our students deserve access to world-class educational facilities. We lost the last bond by 11 votes. My opinion, which I shared during my interview over a year ago, was that we lost it because we didn't tell a story about a vision going forward. We lost it because we told people what was wrong in the past. We're running less than 80% capacity in, in our buildings overall. And yet we're telling people that we have $700 million in deferred maintenance. That doesn't get people excited about a future. I, I have to say that I'm a little concerned on the line of questioning for what I believe was us following through on the directive of the board to get a demographer's study, to get an FMP, for you all to decide where you want to go on a bond. This is a budget transfer that is consistent with everything that we've said over time. And I've been just, you know, at a loss to understand what else I have to say, that this is a priority that the district has shared, that they felt was being responsive to the requests of the board for a decision on the bond. If the board does not want to entertain this at this time, we need to know that in quick order so we can stop and have these fine professionals get back to some other priority work.
I respond to that. I would just like to, I would just like to point out that I think it's very valid for the board to be asking these questions at this time, especially considering there hasn't been an opportunity to do so. I understand you're requesting funding. And in my mind, I'm going to approve the funding, but with that funding comes accountability. And up to this point, this is kind of news to us. Yes, we agreed with the pathway going forward of the demographer's study and an updated FMP. We're not challenging that at, by any means. We're just seeking to understand how this funding is going to be used and what the scope of work is. And if you would like to communicate to us that we can have conversations in the future to, to address some of these questions, then we can certainly do that. But I don't at all see us asking these questions at this time as a threat or that it should be considered in any way that we are not in support of this work.
Yeah. And so my recommendation to the board is that we pause the conversation and we bring the recommended award winners to the next work session to make these explanations. I think the, the defensive position I'm getting is, is that we're asking for a level of expertise of which we're actually seeking funds to bring into the district that myself and the staff aren't prepared to be able to answer individually. And, but we have gone through the thorough and legal process to bring that potential contract here with this fund transfer. And so for me, I believe any more questions would have to have those experts, the consultant and designer in the room, to be able to share the difference and the nuance between a 10-year vision and a 20-year vision and whether or not it can be inclusive of an administrative building on top of or exclusive of the academic buildings.
If I might add to that, Superintendent Goll, we could absolutely include those board members that want to be interviewed and participate in conversation during this, this process. And we can absolutely, for the work session on May 3rd, invite this firm to come in and have a conversation alongside with the demographer to help field additional questions if that's the will of the board.
Well, I can certainly ask the will of the board if that is the direction. But I still think the board has to decide if we want to approve this budget transfer at this point in time without having to pass on this, at this point in time. So, and I know that Director Art and Director Daniels, I'm going to first turn to Director Loma. You've not had our opportunity to speak, Director Loma.
Well, if, if I recall, we had, we discussed this, wanting to go forward and I'm, and my understanding is because we had already discussed this, that's why you're here. These, and some of these questions I heard you asking, you asked them at, at our work session. So, so it's, it's like you're, you're rehashing everything we discussed at a previous work session. So that's what I'm hearing. You can nod your head all you want, but you guys are boring to me. We, we got a vote. It's on, it's on the dock. If it's voted, if you don't like it, you don't want it, vote it down. Let's vote. So I want to call a question.
Yeah. Just a minute. I will get the responses. And what I'm hearing from Director Nelson is just the scope of the work and what is it that this is going to end up, the end outcome being there. And there is some justification in the board wanting to know that question. I don't see anything in that now. If the board wants to rehash basic things that have already been answered, what is an FMP, what is going to be covered, they can go back and refer to that. Director Art, if you are going to summarize it quickly. You have any comments or?
I'm looking at my Little Roberts rules. I believe if you call the question, we have to either vote on the call for the question, then there's, that, that puts a temporary ending on conversation, does it not? Yes, parliamentarian, except I'm failing at it at the moment.
If, okay, is there a, is there a, do we need a second to Director Loma's calling the question?
Sorry. I'm, I'm looking.
Okay. So. Instead of.
It's a motion to end debate.
Do we have a second on it, what Director Loma's motion at this time?
I second it.
Okay. Okay. So, there is a motion on the floor to end the debate and call the question, and there is a second. So, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, so the question was called and you have the budget transfer?
No.
No.
To call the question.
End debate, now we got to vote on the.
Now you got to.
Okay, okay, I stand corrected.
I did not realize that's what we were voting. I would have voted no. I would still like to have had more conversation.
You call the question, you take the vote. That's, we're calling the question means you're voting on the original motion.
Because the second gives you the called question.
Right.
So the called question vote is the vote for the issue because you get the second, which is stop debate.
Okay.
I believe, I believe Director Nelson would like to change her.
No.
She's already made the.
Well, she just commented that she.
Right.
Were we voting on the motion to approve the budget transfer? Or were we voting?
We need a motion to revote.
Yeah, that was the.
That's what I thought.
No, no, no.
Called the question is you vote on the original.
So, President Malpakum?
Okay, okay, so my understanding is that the first question that Director Loma called was to end the debate and that was seconded and that was approved. Now we will approve the original motion that was made to approve the budget transfer, which was also seconded. So roll call please, Melissa. So this vote is on the budget transfer itself.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Okay, after that long debate, now we have the budget transfer that was approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And Chief Odom, if you could please invite our, our partners to the work session to help give further dialogue to the board, thank you.
Absolutely.
So moving on to the next item on the agenda, it is the new charter school application, which is Colorado International Language Academy, SEELA. Director Loma, can you please make the motion for action item F four? Okay, Director Jorgensen.
Yes, I moved that the Board of Education approves resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, the Colorado International Language Academy Charter School Application.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This information was presented to the board as non-action during the April twelfth regular board meeting. And then we reviewed this application in depth during the April nineteenth work session. So is there any additional information that you have?
Yeah, there were some open questions and I know that there were some visits. And so Dr. Mendelsburg and Ms. Bremer and Dr. Rutter could come forward. I'd love for them to give an update and field some questions and comments from the board from their visits. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Superintendent Gaul. Just as Superintendent Gaul said, there were some visits, there have been, these folks have gone through non-action, we did the work session. There's been more things, documents uploaded in the last few days that you guys got last Friday. So if there are any questions, I'll turn it over back to the board. And if there's any questions for Principal Rutter or Board, not Chair anymore, but Board Member Kami Bremer, or open.
I think she's the Vice President now.
Vice President now, okay.
So, thank you for, thank you again for being here. You've been here three Wednesdays in a row, I'm talking to Principal Rutter here. So thank you for your patience and being here, and thank you also for being here, Ms. Bremer. Any follow-up questions from the board in this regard? I know Director Daniels asked for a town hall, a recording of the town hall, and that link was provided to you. And there was some other additional information that was requested, all of which has been provided to the board. Any other additional questions before I call for a vote on this? Any comments or questions? I don't see any at this point in time. Director Bankus or Director Nelson, do you have any comments or questions?
I do, I just wanted to share a comment that I personally am very excited to be bringing you guys into the D eleven family. I think your school is going to provide some great opportunities, continue to provide great opportunities to students and families. And so thank you for the work that you're doing and we're excited to have you on the team.
Thank you, Director Nelson. Roll call please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
That's a unanimous vote and it, it also shows where the board stands at this point in time. This has been a long way coming. We started this charter school strategy conversation early in January and there were several work sessions where we had Glenn come in and present the charter school model and there was a pushback from the board. And now to come to an extent where the entire board is supportive of the charter school strategy. District eleven has come a long way since even seven or eight years back when SEELA came and presented their application at this time. And now to have a board unanimously support your charter school application. So, welcome, welcome to District eleven. And the next step in the process is for you to finalize the contract, Superintendent.
And we'll let our contract negotiations start tomorrow.
Okay, and hopefully this can circle back really quickly.
Hopefully within four to six weeks is our goal.
Okay. Do you have any final comments or something, Ms. Bremer? You haven't.
Um, no, we just want to thank the board for all the time and effort you guys have put into reviewing our, our application and welcoming us here at the meeting, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, Kami Bremer, Board Vice Chair. When these conversations first came up, I was the board chair. And you have, have seen and heard from our current board chair, Ms. Deloge, over the past few weeks and worked directly with her and our wonderful principal. You heard from one of our teachers who is also a parent earlier today and knows the importance of staying connected to a, to a system as she currently has her students at Jenkins. So on behalf of, of the board and the three hundred families, students and their families that, that we serve and represent, I thank you for, for the process, for the diligence, for the questions, and for how seriously you take, you take your roles here. Thanks for your service and we look forward to working through the details. And we're excited about the opportunity to see if this is, is a great fit for our students. And by all indications, right now it looks that way and we're excited about it. Thank you for your diligence and I know you had two board members come and visit us this last week. I hope you had a great tour. And as I've heard Mr. Gaul say in the past, watching third grade math being taught in Mandarin is, is something to behold. So thank you very much, looking forward to it.
Thank you. Best wishes for all of you out there. And I hope to visit your school sometime in the near future too.
And just as we enter into contract negotiations, I do want to acknowledge the patience of the board on this different strategy that we brought to bear and the lateness in the year of how the transfer applications have come. I'm working with Dr. Mendelsburg for us to firm up dates for next year on when new charter and/or transfer charter applications would have to be done with the goal of all of those being done and voted on to the board well before the end of the actual calendar year. This is not comfortable for any of our community to be in April and be having a, a governance conversation. There is animosity, even though SEELA is currently authorized by CSI. And if our contract negotiation fell through, they can continue to do that. But making these changes late in the game, I acknowledge that we are asking our community to be understanding and patient in how quickly we're trying to move. And you have my commitment going forward that we won't put our community in this position again.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Globe Charter School modification to expand the grade configuration. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion for action item F five?
I move that the Board of Education approved resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, Globe Charter Schools' application to modify its grade configuration.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, this item was presented to the board as non-action item during the April twelfth regular board meeting. And this is to expand Globe from a K through sixth school at seventh grade for this upcoming year and a year from now to add eighth grade. Do you have any additional information to present to us at this time, Dr. Mendelsburg?
Uh, no, President Malpakum.
Okay. Are there any feedback or questions on this topic before roll call? Seeing none, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, so this, this request has been approved by the board to expand the grade configuration at Globe Charter School. Moving on, the next resolution in front of the board is twenty twenty-three dash thirty, National Teacher Appreciation Week. Director Art, can you please read the resolution and make the motion for action item F six?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-three thirty, National Teacher Appreciation Week, May eighth through twelve, twenty twenty-three. Whereas America's greatest strength has always been an educated citizenry and that quality of citizenry is directly attributable to our system of free and universal public education. Whereas the foundation upon which that system of public schooling rests is the teacher who is challenged daily to reach out to every student to provide assistance and guidance necessary for full intellectual development. Whereas the work of the teacher immeasurably affects the future lives of all students. Whereas Colorado Springs School District eleven has over eighteen hundred certified teachers who include our classroom instructional teachers, special service providers, counselors, behavior specialists, and library technology educators. Our dedicated teachers support and care for the educational, social, emotional, and health needs for all our diverse students. And whereas teachers are also necessary and valued coaches, including teacher learning and literary coaches, to provide professional support for our other teachers, now therefore be it resolved that the teachers of School District eleven be given the deepest respect and admiration of the citizens of this community and that May eighth through twelve, twenty twenty-three be recognized as National Teacher Appreciation Week. I move that the Board of Education adopts resolution twenty twenty-three thirty, recognizing May eighth through twelve, twenty twenty-three as National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments or thoughts from the board before roll call? Oh, by the, by the way, I think Ms. Bailey is here and Dr. Joe Schott is here, so.
Thank you, President Malpakum, Mr. Gaul, Board Directors. We do truly appreciate our teachers because without our teachers, our children would not be educated. Okay, so it is a, what, a three-legged stool. We all work together to educate our students. And I would like to introduce the President of Colorado Springs Education Association, Dr. Joe Schott, to speak on behalf of our teachers.
Thank you, Chief Bailey. And thank you for letting me speak directly to this. As I followed along, as you read the, the resolution, I note that it focuses importantly on our students. Ultimately, that is why we're here. And so every student, that's what we do in D eleven, it's every student. Those students are diverse and their lives, the fact that we're talking about lives and their futures is really what we're about. That's what teachers take seriously. And I think it's great that this is the language we're choosing here. Children are not just one thing. We talk about the educational side, their physical and emotional health, and their social development because we develop citizens. These are all important. It's a whole child approach and ultimately that comes out in our graduate profile. Those are the important things, that's what teachers focus on. So recognizing the breadth of skills that are required, the responsibilities and so on, that teachers have to undertake and accept is worthy of recognition and appreciation and very glad that we do this at least once a year. And I also want to note particularly that I do really like how Mr. Gaul has students come up and recognize that because that is the relationship. And I think indeed that's the heartwarming part of any board meeting because it's students having a chance to reflect on their own place in our society. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Board members, thoughts or comments? Director Daniels? Oh, I could.
Went off, went away.
There you go.
Pressed it. I, I too want to acknowledge as rough as it, as it has been for these last three, four years or so. There, we can't do anything without the teachers. We can't do anything without working together and finding a way to make sure education is funded in this state. It takes everybody who wants the charters, public schools, private schools, home schools, every single place that says they're here to build citizens and want to educate our students so that they are not out in the streets wreaking havoc because then we know what's going to be said, if they are, that we need to come together and get it done, right? If it's about them. And as Superintendent Gaul noted earlier, that the division was in the district. That's where he's getting most of the backlash, which is part of what I'm saying in regards to like so many areas, like we have got to stop, we've got to stop it. I for one am trying my best to really overlook a lot of things if it's really about the students. And at the same token, it's fascinating to think the adults are supposed to be the role models. So thank you for every single stu, uh, teacher that is out there hanging with us, even though we have a hundred and sixteen that's choosing to leave in one month. Thank you for the, the parent who is going to go and get a license to be a part of this and everyone who's working to make sure that we keep our substitutes and people who are trying their best to keep this system afloat. I'm grateful, thank you.
Director Art?
Thank you, just thanks for the words, Joe. The, whenever I go visit a school, the principals are usually bragging on the teachers that are there. And even the other day when I was Grant and it was, the conversation was about, look at the teachers down the hall, even when they're not in professional development, they are collaborating on what they can do to improve the education for students. They are so engaged and I hear that from, again, the principals. I hear it from parents and I hear it from students even as, as mentioned here. And it is something to listen to those students speak about their teachers. And, and we have the view here in the audience where the teachers' eyes are scrunching up and they're just trying not to cry because it's meaningful. And I hope there's a lot more of those meaningful moments in the next week especially. And I know as we come to the end of the year too, when I was in second grade, I remember I didn't want to leave the class because I wasn't sure I'd ever see my teacher again. You know, that they, they have such an impact. So thank you to you and as a representative for the teachers and to all of the teachers in the district. So thank you to you and as a representative for the teachers and to all of the teachers in the district. Thanks.
Director Bankus?
I want to add my appreciation to the teachers who hear the calling and the mission that they take on. When we, when they, we, because I am also a teacher, endeavor to touch a child's life each and every day. Some days we do it better, and yet the impact that we have are, is long lasting. The worth of what we do with our students every day is immeasurable, and I want to again thank the direction in which this Board has progressed to put students first, to give them the enriched environment that they can grow and develop. And we're seeing that in all of the opportunities that we are being made aware of as they come forward during Board meetings, with their awards, with their thanks to their teachers. We want to make sure, and I think that we are, as we focus on every child, whether it's Capturing Children's Hearts or another program, that every person is valued, that our teachers are valued, our educational support, our ESP. We work together to move forward, and as we continue to develop our mission and our statement, I think our community will come together and we will attract people to our district who have that same vision, who share that vision. And it's important for us to build on our success. So thank you to all the teachers. We couldn't do this unless we had teachers who were willing to come into our classrooms and open their lives to all of the children who they encounter each and every day. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Nelson?
I just wanted to also extend my gratitude to teachers. During COVID, I got to see online the amazing work, and that was a benefit of COVID. I'm grateful for the opportunity that I could see such just amazing teaching that was taking place with my own children. And that was a big influence on my life at the time and stayed with me and was a big reason why I ended up deciding to run for school board because I recognize the value of supporting all of our staff, who then can in turn support our students. So just thank you to all the teachers for the hard work. And as a mom, I'm so very grateful for the teachers in my children's lives.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments from the Board. I also want to, I also want to extend my gratitude to all the teachers out there. It's a tireless work. Your work doesn't start at eight in the morning and end at three in the, I know that you guys take the work back home and do all the grading, prepare for the next day. So, and through the pandemic, we got to see how much of an impact teachers have. And when students had to stay home, parents were the impact that teachers make and how important they were. Parents could not like have the kids back home. They wanted to send them back to the school so teachers can take care of our students. And I know that the behavior issues in the classroom are something that our teachers experience over and over again in the last year or so, and you step up through all those challenges. So you are truly appreciated. This is just for one week out there, but I hope our community celebrates and recognizes our teachers throughout the year with little recognitions that they can do. If it's just a simple note from a student to a teacher, I'm sure that that serves them really well in, so the care and the personal investment that each one of our teachers put into our students is remarkable. So thank you. You are appreciated, and when you look at the Board priorities behind there, one of the priorities is staff investment. And we are committed to ensuring that our staff or teachers are fairly compensated, competitively compensated, and also we provide the professional development for our staff too, so they can continuously enhance their teaching and the learnings that they need to do to be better prepared to step into the classroom. So from the Board, from all of us, thank you for what you do. Roll call, please. Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The Resolution for National Teacher Appreciation Week, which is from May eighth to May 12th, is adopted. I hope our community also turns up that week and supports our teachers. Moving on to the next resolution, Financial Literacy Month. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the resolution? And make a motion?
Yes. Resolution 2023 dash 31, recognizing April of 2023 as Financial Literacy Month. Whereas the Colorado Springs School District 11 Board of Education is committed to ensuring that the schools of Colorado Springs School District 11 are empowering the whole child. And whereas the Board believes that an important indicator of college and career readiness is financial literacy education that exposes students to the basics of financial planning, including the value of money and how to budget, invest, spend, and borrow. And whereas according to the recent report entitled Economic Wellbeing of U.S. Households by the Board of Governors of the Federal Reserve System, nearly four in 10 adults in the United States cannot cover an unexpected expense of $400. And whereas according to the 2020 report entitled Survey of the States: Economic and Personal Finance Education in Our Nation's Schools by the Council of Economic Education, one, only 25 states require students to take an economics course as a high school graduation requirement. And two, only 21 states require students to take a personal finance course as a high school graduation requirement, either independently or as part of an economic course. And whereas expanding access to educating all students of the foundations of sound money management and personal literacy around the global financial system will provide individuals with a greater sense of knowledge and comfort for managing finances and building wealth. And whereas quality personal financial education is essential to ensure that individuals are prepared to manage money, credit, and debt, and to become responsible workers, heads of households, investors, entrepreneurs, business leaders, and citizens, and empowers individuals to make wise financial decision decisions, and reduces the confusion caused by an increasingly complex economy. And whereas a greater understanding of and familiarity with financial markets and institutions will lead to increased economic activity and growth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Colorado Springs School District 11 Board of Education designates April 2023 as Financial Literacy Month to raise public awareness about the importance of personal financial education in the United States and the serious consequences that may result from a lack of understanding about personal finances and our ever-changing economy. I move that the Board of Education adopts Resolution 2023 dash 31, recognizing April 2023 as Financial Literacy Month in District 11.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments from the Board before adopting this resolution? I know, Director Jorgensen, you brought this resolution in front of the Board last year. And I will defer to you first. Okay.
First, I apologize for it being a little bit late for us to be reading it here as the end of April is approaching. But just again, we're taking up the work of financial literacy in our graduation requirements and our graduation profile. I love seeing the work from Velvet in the Involve Families with Schools piece about junior achievement. So there is important work being done and considering making sure that we have financially literate graduates moving forward in in our district. And so this is just a kudos to that and to the fact that there are lots of things changing in the world, and and money is one of the things that will always be a tool for you to have either success or burdens in life. And the more education we can get around that for our our students, the better they will potentially be as they go out into the world.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Director Bankus.
I want to echo the thanks to Director Jorgensen for bringing financial literacy to the conversation from the dais and the contribution that it, that that this will make to giving our students preparation to handle adulthood. And Ja, uh, Junior Achievement is a program that's been around for a long time. It would be wonderful to see it in more schools. So thank you, Director Jorgensen, and thank you District 11 for giving our kids the tools that they need to be successful once they are out on their own.
Director Ott?
Thank you. I can assure you, Director Jorgensen, of course, students are learning, but and and the resolution may be late. But when I was at Grant, I remember seeing a student working through a math problem with, you know, values of coins. And when we were at the Cila, there were not just third graders, but there were kindergartners. There was the learning in Mandarin with dollar bills. So yes, it's certainly out there, which is what we want. So excellent. Thanks for bringing the resolution.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The Resolution adopting April as Financial Literacy Month has been adopted by the Board. Moving on to the last action item, Resolution 2023 dash 32, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Director Daniels, can you please read the resolution and make the motion for action item F eight?
Resolution 2023 dash 32, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month of May. Whereas the month of May is set aside to honor the numerous contributions Asian American and Pacific Islanders, AAPI, have made to the United States. Whereas in 1977, Congress introduced a House Resolution to proclaim the first 10 days of May as Asian Pacific Heritage Week, a celebration of Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. And in 1978, President Jimmy Carter signed a joint resolution designating this as an annual celebration, which we now know as Asian Pacific Heritage Week. And whereas in 1990, May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States, which was on May 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10th, 1869, in which the majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And whereas in 1990, Congress voted to expand Asian Pacific heritage from a week to a month-long celebration, and in May 1992. The month of May was permanently designated as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas understanding Asian and Pacific Islander heri, history is an important part of celebration celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have endured and overcome hardship and heartache. In the earliest years, tens of thousands of gold rush pioneers, coal miners, transcontinental railroad, rail, railroad builders, as well as farm and orchard laborers, were subject to unjust working conditions, prejudice, and discrimination. And whereas even in the darkness of the Exclusion Act and Japanese internment, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have persevered, providing for their families and creating opportunities for their children. And whereas we acknowledge these Americans for their contributions to government, industry, and commerce, agriculture, science, literature, music, and the arts, creating a better America despite ongoing prejudice and discrimination. And whereas the diversity of these groups includes Asian Indian, Bengali, Burmese, Cambodian, Chinese, Filipino, Guamanian, Hawaiian, Mung, Indonesian, Japanese, Korean, Laotian, Balayan, Okinawan, Pakistani, Samoan, Thai, Vietnamese, and others. And whereas our Asian American and Pacific Islander students, families, staff, and community have made numerous contributions to School District 11, now therefore be it resolved by the Colorado Springs School District 11 that May 2023 is designated as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with appropriate instructional activities to recognize the countless contributions that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made and continue to make in helping our nation. I move that the Board of Education adopts Resolution 2023 dash 32, recognizing May 2023 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you, Director Daniels. That was a long resolution to read, so I appreciate you taking the time to read it. Any thoughts or comments before roll call? Seeing none, the Board has over and over again said that it doesn't matter whether, what nationality or ethnicity, all students are welcome into our schools. All students are valued, all students are seen, and all students are heard. So United States is a melting pot of various different cultures, and that's what makes our country great. So with that, it is good that we can recognize Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month during May. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The Resolution has been adopted. Moving to the non-action items, the first one is instructional materials and secondary course approvals. This is new information. So Superintendent Gall, I see Ms. Carol Gates up here too, so.
Yeah, Carol can come forward and just to frame for folks the immense amount of effort it takes to communicate these instructional course approvals as they come forward. I love getting my two-minute voicemails from the district, as well as an email and well as a text, and then knowing that there's a room where I can go make these reviews. It just shows the commitment of our instructional team to ensure that we are abiding by the policies and the commitment that our families are communicated to on what these opportunities are. Carol?
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education. It's our pleasure to come before you again for the Spring 23 Curricular Materials Course Adoption Process, which is scheduled once during the fall and spring. Carol Gates, Curriculum and Instruction Director. For the instructional materials summary, real quickly, as you know, the Board of Education has the responsibility to approve course requests and textbook materials, periodicals, newspapers, computer software and content posters. The adoption of new instructional materials originates at a school site based on identified curricular needs. Our process includes a minimum of a one-week public review, as Superintendent Gall mentioned, prior to the non-action Board meeting. This window is open from March 31st to April 10th. It's our hope that by ensuring we have the full public review finalized prior to non-action, it would ensure you all get the public comments during non-action. Because if you recall last time, we had non-action following at the same time we were doing the public windows. We didn't have all the final comments logged in before you all got the first packet. So we were hoping that we'll give you enough information to ask the right questions at this point in the process. So for tonight's order, we'll start with the courses and move to school site instructional material requests. Secondary courses, we had 10 high school course proposals, and they were all from Palmer High School. There was an introduction to science research intended to be offered as a three-course sequence after students meet a biology prerequisite, where students will experience the planning, performing, and communicating original science and engineering research in any field that interests them. They will have opportunities to present their research in various settings, including but not limited to in-class the Palmer Science Lecture Series and a variety of science research competitions. This request was the one that received the most public comments, a total of six, you can find at the end of the course packet on page 114. Five comments were shared using the online feedback form and one handwritten in-person comment. All comments were favorable. Two comments came from retired science teachers, who now serve on the Board of Pike's Peak Regional Science and Engineering Fair, who shared the high value of these skills in the real world of scientific investigation. One stated they enthusiastically support the course. The in-person comment shared that this course offered a wide range of possibilities and commented that a lot would depend on the teacher. There is also a terror trex. This is intended to be an academic elective using the IB approaches to learning framework that assists students in implementing their life skills. This request received one public comment. The comment asked questions about more specific content and indicated after asking Darian Fowles, who's our wonderful coordinator of a lot of this, if the if the class focused on skills for research, communication, and self-management, then they thought it would be okay. Once he explained it's really intended to begin with ninth-grade freshmen who just need to kind of get used to being organized and get those skills kind of in place to be successful in the high school. Not unlike what we did with Coronado Edge, I want to say two years ago. They have something similar for their advisory period. Spanish Language A bundle. So these courses are listed as a bundle to show the sequence students can follow if they reach higher levels of proficiency. levels of proficiency. These sequences are set for college-level language courses for heritage Spanish learners or students that have successfully completed two hundred and forty hours of Spanish prior to enrollment. The sequence is based on the IB catalog and the large syllabus is also provided within your packet, and you'll see that sequence listed. The last bundle of Spanish courses are also for two-year college-level um coursework, but these courses include a higher level HL, number of assignments, and a fourth assessment component, the higher level um twelve-hundred-to-fifteen-word essay, the pa- uh the page eight of the Language and Literature Guide gives that chart outlining what the difference is between SL and HL. This is really just getting them set up to be that IB program that needs to take them into that college course level, also kind of getting us prepared for some of that language um requirement that we've been speaking to. This request received one public comment using an online form. The comment shared that the courses proposed are appropriately rigorous for Spanish literacy classes. So that is the list of the course um requests. Then we had one secondary course change request. It's a fairly slight modification. It was submitted by our math and STEM facilitator, Paul Bungie. The request adjusts the previous Honors pre-calculus one and two to AB pre-calculus, AP, sorry, pre-calculus and one and two. This change was made because the course content is similar, but the AP option offers students the chance to take the AP exam to receive potential college credit. This request received one public comment. The comment was favorable, stating the syllabus looks fine and textbook looks good. And then moving on to our instructional material requests, that we just had one. This time it was a duello, Spanish literature to be used in our Spanish SL and HL classes, about a man searching to solve a family mystery by citing constant um by um, I think it didn't mean to say citing concentrate him, but visiting concentration camps in Germany where his grandfather was imprisoned. Um this request received two public comments. The comments were both favorable, one stating it was a must-read for the IB diploma high-level students, and the second comment was written in Spanish, commenting on the content about how Eduardo discovers the secrets of his family and the difficulty of the eighties, as well as what happened during the concentration camp era. The last comment says this book has taught me much of life in Guatemala and the life of the Jews. And that is it. It's a short list this time.
So thank you. This is coming as a non-action item in two weeks' time. This will come back as action for formal board approval. Any comments on the new courses or questions, and also the one material that Ms. Gates talked about? And I see Director Nelson's hand up first. Director Nelson?
I just had a one question really on the Spanish extension to the five, six, seven, eight. You spoke to this a little, but can you help me understand why now we're extending and offering this course? Did we previously send kids to a college if they were at that level, and now we're wanting to bring it in-house?
Um, that's a great question. I believe, and I'm I have Clara Holobauer, the Assistant Principal for Palmer, on the line with us, so she can speak to it more directly. But my understanding is really it's just a matter of, we have students that are now progressing through a more rigorous language program, so as we bring those kids through, they need to have that opportunity to continue. Um but if Clara wants to log in from Webex, she's uh she can tell you what they've done in the past. But from what I understand from Claudette Murtha, it was just a matter of saying we now have a batch of students that are ready because we frankly started some great work in North as well. Is she on there?
I'm happy to jump in.
Great.
Um, so in the world of IB, uh every IB course has a standard level, which is uh appropriate for most students and a higher level. And really, we're looking at adopting the higher level courses so that those students who are ready for more, even more rigorous college coursework, have a chance to do that and be able to earn those kinds of college credits.
Exciting. I mean, I see it as, we talk a lot about CTE and having offerings, and now we're just kind of doing it more at the language level. So, um, very exciting to hear that our students are needing it. That's awesome. Good problem.
I believe some of this, too, is that we really are doing a great job with our SEAL of Bili literacy that we've just started rolling up. And so we have a lot more of our heritage speakers getting a chance to kind of show off their skills as well. So this is a great opportunity for that.
And if I can add one more thing, it allows um the Language A courses that Carol spoke about allow our students to receive the bilingual IB diploma if they take a Language A in English and a Language A in Spanish. So that is even another layer of opportunity for our students.
A question. And then I I had another question. I'll just share it for the public because I spoke with um Carol yesterday about it in person, and she explained that the AP, pre-AP calculus change from being honors and now AP uh will impact all high schools, potentially, if they want it. Um it's available. I, when I was reading through the paperwork, thought it was just Dory, but she clarified. So um that is a very wise move as well, it sounds to me. So um thank you for just all that you've done, Carol, in the department in helping to streamline our process. And I appreciate the time that you recognized moving the window earlier for feedback from the community so that the board would have time to review that. And so thanks for um adjusting and being flexible and adapting. And uh you mentioned yesterday that over the years, you are being more discerning in what we bring into the district. And so um it's helping us have better just continuity across our schools, and um it's uh really positive changes that we're seeing by you being here in the district in the last couple of years. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. It is a system, though. We have a whole lot of people working on that streamlining. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Jorgensen?
A couple of questions on the first two, science research. It says it's a first year of three years. Are we approving all three, or is just this just the first year and the and two and three are kind of already set? And then I saw something about it maybe only being a semester. So can you clarify some of that?
Absolutely. Darian Founds, our science specialist, is on as well, as Clara from Palmer can also speak to it, but I'll let Darian speak to that as well.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Mr. Goll. Thank you for the question, Director Jorgensen. Um I'm on, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Loman, uh who brought this course forward. And my understanding is that the course is intended down the road to be perhaps a three-course sequence, but at this time, we're looking at just piloting it as a proof of concept with uh this one semester course.
Okay. And then does, is he partnering with, you know, I mean, I worked at UCCS's um bio lab when I was attending there as undergrad. Is he partnering with local universities to help aid in some of this science research, or is it just kind of built-in-house and student-led and then teacher-guided?
Um, I think the initial plans are for students to get kind of in-house support and then move to the external kind of modality. So um in the course description, I noted that uh he mentioned uh having the opportunity for summer internships and mentorships with uh perhaps local universities and with uh people that work in the field and in the industry. So I think it's going to start with just kind of that basic foundational skills of how to do scientific research. And then as the kids learning, the students learning scaffolds to higher levels, uh we definitely want to be partnering with uh the community as much as possible to give them those authentic learning experiences.
Okay. And what what does the curriculum look like for this research? It's, you know, a lot of, wh- when I read it, you know, students have an idea on what they want to look at, you know, could be hydroponics, it could be, you know, antibiotic resistance of of whatever. I mean, I think back to my my college coursework and even my high school, you know, rhetoric writing class, where you you knocked out your paper and then you kind of sat around for a little bit, you know, waiting for the next thing to start or whatever. My my concern is that with the amount of student self-guided effort here, and maybe a lack of a a curriculum that is presented to us to review as far as here's how to conduct science research, I worry we're going to have maybe some some students that take advantage of some downtime, just to put it nicely.
Yeah, we can definitely explore uh what resources and and options are out there that um can kind of keep the students grounded and kind of uh help to flush out the syllabus and the scope of sequence in more detail. So um this is something that's innovative. Uh Mr. Loman is is a teacher who brings a lot of great ideas to the table. Um so I know it's still a a process in works. And, you know, one of the things that he has to do is just get the course on the books, and then we can start building it out from there. But um I have partnered with, this was this was pre-COVID, um but I did partner with the UCCS Biochemistry Laboratory, and we were offering um opportunities to train teachers on how to support students with writing uh scientific research papers. Um so that might be a partnership that we could kind of bring back to life uh here uh as this course gets underway.
I I think for me to have a yes on this, I would like to see some more content to it. And as somebody with a double major in biology and chemistry, I'm I'm all for this topic. Uh and a science teacher, you know, I love it and I like the innovation. I just to see it happen, and I want to, I want to see it happen. I just want to see, hey, we're going to spend, you know, this first, you know, five weeks in the different types of science research, what does a report look like? And and kind of build out a little more of that content um before I would give it a an A-OK. As much as I want to say yes right now, I'd just do a little bit of of due diligence, due diligence and build this out a little bit. So um please pass that on to him and and uh see if we can get that in the next couple of weeks before we see that action.
Okay, sure thing. I will, I will work with uh Mr. Loman on bringing a more detailed uh course description forward to you. I have a syllab- a draft syllabus in front of me. Um and then we can dig that, uh dig a little deeper into that down to kind of a a unit overview level, almost like our our K through eight uh quarterly overviews.
Thank you for that. And then I'll I'll shift to the um Taretrex class as far as a full-year class. I mean, this looks like becoming an adult 101. I I like the tentative topics in the first two semesters. I wonder if these wouldn't be something that we would have embedded more in some of our humanities-type classes, um you know, economics, business, you know, 101-type o- course offerings. Uh I saw the comment where Mr. Founds, you replied back and said it's it's more for, you know, lower-performing or trying to catch up um undergrads in high school. And I could see that being helpful. Um I do wonder if we need a full two-semester course for this kind of thing, where we can't maybe embed this into some kind of, I don't know if they do homerooms or, you know, something like that. It'd be my concern. I love all the topics being covered here, but whether or not we have, you know, it as an elective where kids go and and have, I don't, I don't know how I feel about that right off the bat.
Would you like to send a question over to Clara Holobauer, the AP at Palmer, to get more information, or are you just doing a?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I guess si- similar to the science research, these are tentative topics. Are there, are there some lessons that she's gonna, is there a book she's gonna use? Is there, you know, it's a video and, you know, ex- I mean, these are great topics, and I I like that, but what does it look like in as far as actual curriculum? You know, um, we're going to approve a class and go, great, you're covering these topics, but what curriculum are we looking at? And what do you, you know, what are you going to teach? And um I think that would be needed for that course for me to say yes as well, just a little bit more context.
So Clara, are you able to address what your staff was um kind of visioning for that?
Sure. Um, thank you for that question. Um it's a, it's a little bit of a challenging course to explain because it is our IB twist to the traditional study skills class. We have identified, especially post-pandemic, our ninth graders really struggle with the soft skills that it takes to be a successful student.
Mm-hmm.
And um they, in the IB world, they are called the Approaches to Learning Skills, Thinking Skills, Research Skills, Communication, um Social Skills, and Self-Management, and particularly Self-Management, and everything that falls under that, is a big hurdle for them in um from engaging in the academic, with academic content in the classroom and earning those credits towards graduation. So what the teachers have done is building a lot of confidence, um self-advocacy skills, um and really taking some of those lessons about organization that they've done in study skills traditionally, and um put them in the frame of IB. Uh I think that's the best way to describe it. Um it is very student need-driven, so the students um in IB do self-assessments around the approaches to learning and reflect on their progress towards them. And um this course um would give them an opportunity to do so in a structured way.
Are there existing study skills classes that are already at Palmer that focus on some of these things?
We've had, historically, we've always had study skills or study semester. Study skills is credit-bearing, study semester is not. Um I have worked at three of our high schools in the district, and every district, every school has a slightly different curriculum um around s- uh how students spend their time. Sometimes it's a little bit of getting ca- work caught up. Sometimes it's a little bit of um grade checks and grade reflection where they, ever teachers ask them to go into Power School and really look at, okay, what what am I missing? What are my strengths? What do I need to ask more questions on with the teachers? And to kind of build those, um, like I said, self-advocacy and independent skills so they can engage in the classroom and ab- and, you know, communicate with teachers effectively, um so they can increase their grades and ultimately get to graduation.
Is it okay if I add?
Yeah, please.
To that, um Director Jorgensen, Carol and I were just, I'm talking on the side here, just clarifying. Um it is like, this is a really nice um addition to um really making a robust uh what we've typically called um in middle and high school, an advisory uh period.
Yeah.
And it's directly connected to where we're headed with the AMP, with building out um as uh um our area superintendent, Brian Relick, described um our IB pathway. So it's great that it's very specific, that they're building out something very specific to building um skills within IB. Um and I think Carol had mentioned, you know, similarities to other um advisory-type blocks like the Edge Program.
Even your Avid type, you know, self-developed.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Um I want to say one thing about what you were saying. I think it's, uh it makes a lot of sense to want um a little bit more information. I know Carol was saying that we could provide that to you in terms of the science research course. Um what I would also say is we need to, um, those sorts of questions are what we're striving. When we had um the conversation, when um uh our executive principal, um and principal of Coronado, Darren Smith, came to talk about um AMP and the work that we're doing there and our work with credits and coursework, we are really looking, not just at um courses that are coming in, right, but how are we really defining competency, having scope and sequence, having um a minimal level of connections, which are the things I believe you're asking for, um and that we're gonna uh work to ensure happen um in uh in courses across, not unsimilar to other districts within Colorado and across the nation. Secondary, um we need to continue to work with our um our secondary schools on that um collaboratively, but in the spirit of really fostering interests and programming, which I think you see in some of the, in a lot of the program, the courses that are offered.
Okay, thank you. I I just know, I remember doing advisory in middle school, and if you didn't have a strong teacher with those kids, it could be the coolest growth mindset lesson, and it quickly spirals into chaos. And that was for twenty minutes. So if we're talking a high school course, and we don't have a a a strong teacher in that place that is helping deliver on these much-needed soft skills, you know, which we we do, we we focus on a K through five and in middle school, and then we kind of just go, great, you're basically an adult in hel- high school, so, you know, take your courses and get to graduation. So I appreciate that that we're having it here. It it definitely needs to be purposefully planned time um that can be in fact impactful to the kids. So that that's just my concerns. So I I I don't want to take any more time in the evening, but that'd be great to look at that before action.
Completely. Agree completely.
Great, thank you.
So one of the things that you can do, probably follow up with uh Ms. Yeah, Ms. Gates, and uh if you can provide some additional information to Director Jorgensen uh before this concession action item in uh two weeks, uh that is the first thing that when I looked at the content for this that came up, Avid, um, uh, some of our students received that Avid soft skills at some of our schools and others don't. Um but if you can answer some of the concerns that uh Director Jorgensen has, you can send it to the whole board. And if Director Jorgensen wants to reach out directly to you to get some of these questions answered, or to Mr. Founds or um Clara, uh then he can also do that, if that is okay with Superintendent Goll. Okay, so then you you are ready to then, two weeks from now, um make a decision on that from the board bias. I had a quick question, and this was about the course change that was being made uh from um Honors Pre-Calculus one-two to AP Pre-Calculus one-two. So do teachers then have to take any kind of special certification or training to teach this class now, now that it's AP?
Yeah, I'll let Paul speak to that.
Okay.
Um, I think that what they were saying in, at Dory at least, who brought this forward, is some redundancy, and we have the same teachers teaching these. is some redundancy. And we have the same teachers teaching these courses, but I'll let him speak to the specifics that they talked to him about. I think he's on there. Is he on there?
I'm here.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone. Yeah, so as, as far as I know, I don't believe there's any specific certification like an IB school would run. They might need some training when it comes to administering the AP assessment, but I don't think that there's anything specific that would be required for extra training for teachers.
Okay. Is this going to be the same textbook that they would use or is it a different textbook with the AP?
I believe it is the same textbook. It was provided at the public review setting. Be more than happy to get that if, if it needed to be reviewed again. But I'm pretty sure it's the textbook that they have in-house for pre-calculus.
Okay. I can check back with you if I need to take a look at that textbook. Okay? Mr. Bungy, if it's, if you have the textbook for review, I would like to take a look at it. Not now, in the next couple of weeks.
Yep, I can make sure I get that to you.
Okay, thank you. And I do appreciate the direction in which we are going from honors pre-cal to AP pre-cal. This gives our students that opportunity to take that AP exam and also earn college credit along the way. So thank you for bringing this change in front of the board. I wholeheartedly support that.
You're welcome. I know that our teachers are really excited to have that switch over for their students.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions, this will come back into the board as an action item two weeks from now.
Thank you so much.
So moving on to this.
Carol, if you could summarize what the do-outs were from the multiple questions and share them with me so we can track them to get to action in two weeks. Thank you.
The proposed board meeting dates for fiscal year 2023-24. So Board Policy BE states that from time to time, the board shall take action to establish a schedule of regular meetings. The board's schedule is presented to the board for approval annually. And this is the schedule that is coming in front of the board. Ms. Olson, if you can pull up that schedule for our community and also for the board to take a look at on your screen up there. And I will turn it over to the board for any comments or suggestions or questions regarding, regarding the board's schedule for 2023, 2024. Well, that is, and to what Director Jorgensen was asking is about less meetings. And that was one of the conversations I had with that Superintendent Gall. And Superintendent Gall suggested the same thing, that maybe going forth into the next year, we can reduce the number of meetings. And this is his first year coming to a school district. So there were some changes that were taking place. And this is also in response to several board asks that comes, comes along the way, that if you are asking for items to come in front of the board, then we got a schedule of work session. Now, if you look at the board meetings for next year, the third meeting in every month is with an asterisk and the fifth meeting in every month is with a double asterisk. Both of those are optional meetings. If the workload in front of the board is not as much as it has been this year, and the asks and the requests on the board also is manageable, then we can make it three board meetings a month or occasionally even call off other board meetings if necessary. So, I mean, this has been a collective approach. Superintendent Gall has been bringing quite a few AMP and FMP now, the several other changes that have been taking place. So with that, any further questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none. I appreciate Ms. Olson putting this together. She went through checking all the dates, double checking.
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I mean, I fully support the concept. I would love to have fewer meetings. That then enables more family time for our staff who attend our meetings and the us board members who are volunteers. I just want to point out that we, we're going to have to figure out how to get through the work. I mean, we didn't start the actual business of the board until after 7:30 tonight. So we're going to have to figure out how we can get through the work so that we don't go so late. If it means that we're going to end up going till 11 o'clock more often, then I think we probably would need to keep meetings more often. But I do fully support the idea. I hope we can get there.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback. Moving on, policy JLCD, administering medicines to students. Dr. X?
Good evening, President Malpakum, Superintendent Gall, members of the board. Policy JLCD is being revised to align with Code of Colorado regulations and Board of Education Regulation JLCD-R. Currently, JLCD-R has language addressing the storage of emergency medications. However, JLCD does not contain this same language. For purposes of this revision, secured means in a cabinet or drawer that is easily accessible to staff but not to students. These locations are typically in the health or main, or main office, health room or main office, but the medication may even be stored in a classroom for timeliness. Examples of emergency medication, which would be kept in a secured unlocked location, would be glucagon for diabetic emergencies, midazolam for seizures, and epipens for allergic reactions.
Thank you. So this was just language that was added in there in the policy itself? This language is already there in regulation?
Correct.
Okay. And, but it has to be duplicated in the policy, too?
Executive Director Skates felt it was necessary to put it into the policy.
Okay. Any comments or questions on JLCD and the revision that has been proposed in front of the board? Seeing none. And Director Bankus or Nelson had no questions either? Okay.
No.
Thumbs up to go to consent? Okay, I've got this. Moving on, we have another one, JLDC.
Policy JLCDC and Regulation JLCDC are being introduced this evening for adoption by the Board of Education. As was mentioned earlier during comments, the Colorado State Legislature passed a new law last year called the medically necessary services in schools. The new law requires every school district in Colorado to have a district policy in place by July 1, 2023, describing how requests for these services will be managed by the district. And two, by July 1, 2024, to begin tracking requests for these services in school and provide data on the state regarding the numbers of requests and whether they were approved or denied. The policy version before you contains CASB's recommended language. And Executive Director Gudwagen is here to answer any questions the board may have related to this policy.
Okay. Do you have anything to add on to it, to what Dr. X shared with us?
Sure, I can. Good evening, Superintendent Gall and board members. Prior to this new law being in place, medically necessary services really applied to students who were medically fragile and required a nurse to be in school with them to provide lifesaving measures should they be necessary. So this new law really expands the definition of what medically necessary services are. As Dr. X mentioned, CASB provided the draft language for this policy. And special education directors across the state are, are recommending that we really adopt this, this language. What we like about it is that it puts the responsibility back on IEP teams in schools who know the students the best. But it also gives parents a voice in the process. They can come to meetings. They can bring their outside providers with them to be part of the conversation about how these services may need to be provided or could be provided with the staff that we already have in place.
Thank you. Director Jorgensen. I, I will come to you, Director Bankus. Is that you, Director Bankus? Okay, Director Jorgensen first.
So thank you. Just a grammatical correction. Usually you do individualized education program and then in parentheses, you'd have the IEP. So I think that in both the redlined versions, I would just make that grammatical correction to align with, with that. That's all. Thank you.
Director Bankus?
I just wanted to say thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Director Nelson, did you have anything to, was she? Okay, sounds good. Any other feedback or comments from the board? Okay, with the minor change that Director Jorgensen talked about, are, is the board okay with moving this to consent? Okay.
Yeah.
So. Okay, thank you. Future agenda items, request for new agenda items from the board. Seeing none, I am going to quickly move on to a calendar review. Oh, let me quickly talk about one, a future agenda items. If you can pull up the calendar. So I just want, this was approved by the board last year. So this was the board calendar that was approved by the board for 2022-23. And if you look at the May calendar, the date May 24, 2022, first of all, that is a typo. It should have been May 24, 2023. But May 24, 2023 was announced as a board meeting day out there. But on May 24, we have one of our high school graduations on that day. So I just want to, since it has been announced, I asked Legal how to go about making sure we announce to the community. And Legal came back and said that I can ask the board for a thumbs up. So is the board thumbs up not having a meeting on May 24, 2023, as that is going to be a graduation? Okay, great.
Do you want to make the comment on the addition of the special meeting to handle the budgets prior? Because we have budget approval. Chris, what's the date that we're?
I think it's coming on May 17.
Okay.
That is still a special meeting day. So it's coming on May 17. We don't need an additional meeting. If you need an additional meeting, you can let me know. But it's right now coming on May 17. Yeah. Okay, thank you. So we don't have a meeting on May 24, 2023 because the board is going to be at graduations, high school graduations. Okay, moving on. Calendar review, we have a work session next week. The agenda items on the work session, if I can remember, it is the demographic for study that is coming up next week. We also have end-of-the-year STAR assessment data that is going to come in front of the board. And we will also have some information regarding the FMP work. We will have them out there at that time. And I will check and see if anything else needed to be added to the board agenda at that time. May 10 is a regular board meeting. May 17 is most likely a special meeting at that time because the budget is going to come in front of the board at that time, if the board is ready for that. I'm not sure if we need a work session, too. May have a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus? Director Bankus, Director Daniels?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Loma?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we are officially adjourned at 9:47 PM.